This is the this is the meeting of November first. Um, let's begin with a roll call.
Your Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
I don't see Mr. Patches, but I there is Mr. Patches.
I'm here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here. Okay, uh, so we have, um, um, believe we can seat everyone this evening. Um, so they'll, um, am I correct about that, Steve?
Yeah, I'm trying to count heads right now.
It looked to me as if we could.
You have nine right now, so if Darius comes on, you will need to, um, see either Hector or, um, or Chapin.
Okay, um, so for, uh, right now for this first item, um, we'll see both Chapin and Hector. And, um, our first public hearing is twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five SP slash CAM, the Housing Authority of the City of, uh, Norwalk and Sound Communities, Inc., forty-five Meadow Street, District Two, Block eighty-one Lot sixty-four. Proposed multifamily development consisting of fifty-six units within nine buildings, uh, including a community center for tenants and associated onsite improvements. Um, and I, uh, believe Attorney Sachi, you are representing, um, the, uh, Housing Authority this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Uh, good evening. My name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Harmony Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent the Housing Authority of the City of Norwalk along with Sound Communities, Inc., which are the applicants, uh, on this application. The Norwalk Housing Authority is the owner of the property at forty-five Meadow Street. The application for special permit and CAM were submitted on September eighteenth. Neighbors were notified of the submission of the application on September twenty-fifth, via certificate of mailing, which should be in permanent file. Uh, neighbors were notified tonight of tonight's public hearing on October twenty-twentieth by certified mail return receipt requested and regular mail. And this morning, an envelope with the green cards and copies of letters for which the green cards have not been received was delivered to staff. Uh, for tonight's presentation, you may hear from some or all of the following individuals who are present for the meeting. Certainly Adam Babelski, Executive Director of the Norwalk Housing Authority, Lisa Endo of the Housing Authority, who is the project manager on this project, Kristen Mitchell, Professional Engineer at Langen Engineering, Brian Phillips, a Professional Engineer at Langen Engineering, Adam Pommel Palmer, the Project Architect from Amenta Emma, Steve Sapola, Professional Engineer and Traffic Consultant with Hardisty in Hanover, and Diana Varan, who is a representative of the Meadow Gardens Tenant Association. As Mr. Schulman indicated, the applicant applicants are the Housing Authority of the City of Norwalk, which is a separate entity from the city itself, and Sound Communities, Inc. The property at forty-five Meadow Street is known as Meadow Gardens. It is located in a de-resident zone and a very small portion of it is also within the edge of the coastal area management boundary. The property is bordered by the to the east by Meadow Street and to the west, north and south by, um, residentially developed properties, longstanding residential residentially developed properties. If I may ask Kristen Mitchell, if you could screen share that one graphic we're going to use during this initial presentation? Um, as Mr. Schulman also indicated, the property is currently improved with four detached residential structures, constructed nineteen sixty-eight, which in total offer fifty-four residential apartments. There's also a fifteen hundred square foot community center, fifty-four ungrade parking spaces and a playground. Directly to the south of the property is a city-owned park that has basketball court in it. And Langen Engineering has recently run won the bid for the renovations to that park, but that park is not part of this application. The project that's before you with special permit and CAM applications is to demolish the existing structures today, then to redevelop the site with nine new residential structures containing fifty-four units. That would be an increase of a total of two units over the fifty-four that exist today. New onsite lighting and landscaping, increased tenant parking spaces from fifty-four to seventy-five, a community community center that will house a learning center, gymnasium, all-purpose room and other space for tenants, interior play areas, more than eleven thousand square feet of recreation area, and so solar panels are proposed on the roof of the community center, and the dwellings will be solar-ready if that becomes possible for the Housing Authority. Just a little bit of information on the apartments themselves, as I mentioned, fifty-six, which is an increase of a total of two apartments from what exists today, four one-bedroom, fifteen two-bedroom, thirty-three bedroom, and seven four-bedroom units ranging in size from nine hundred square feet for the one-bedrooms to approximately eighteen hundred square feet for the four bedrooms. All will be affordable in accordance with the city's workforce housing regulations. Some residents will continue to receive rental assistance from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, similar to subsidies that are available today to Meadow Gardens residents. Little bit of information on the Community Learning Center. That will house, uh, space for tutoring and other activities for tenants and young chin, young youngsters who live in the complex. Uh, and there's an at will be an after-school program during the school year for grades K through five, offering assistance in homework, math and literacy tutoring, STEM lessons, art, music, and other recreational activities. A summer camp is contemplated for the site for residents of Meadow Gardens, which will likely serve forty to fifty kids. Uh, a gymnasium is part of the Community Learning Center, and that was identified as a priority by the tenants, and that gym will be free to tenants, can including and it will include exercise equipment and similar, um, amenities. Then there will also be a multipurpose room for tenants, which can be for, um, the art club for kids, resident meetings, or private tenant events. So tonight, as I indicated, you'll hear from various individuals, and we'll get it going with Kristen Mitchell, who will of Langen, who will describe to you the site plan, utilities, parking, answer any questions you may have. She will be followed by Adam Palmer of Amenta Emma, who will explain to you the architectural style and the the structures, and answer any questions you have with respect to architectural questions. Thereafter, Steve Sapola of Hardisty in Hanover will describe to you the traffic analysis and the impact of the two additional units on the roadway systems uh, adjacent to and in the vicinity of the site. And lastly, but certainly not least, uh, you'll hear from Mr. Babelski, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, and also from Ms. Varan, one of the tenant representatives. So unless you have any questions for me with this brief overview, I'd like to turn it over to Kristen so she can describe to you the site plan and answer any questions you may have with respect to the site plan. Kristen?
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Liz. Um, as Liz mentioned, just one clarification. So my name's Kristen Mitchell, but I'm actually a project landscape architect, and then I'm joined by Brian, uh, Phillips, who is the, uh, Civil Engineer on the project. So, uh, Brian and I will be teaming up on this first portion. So as Liz mentioned, uh, there is a slight increase from, uh, fifty-four units to fifty-six units located here. You noted here on the on the site pan, the quite colored site plan. The proposed, uh, site plan maintains the existing access along Meadow Street located here. As you enter Meadow Street, either via sidewalk or, uh, accessing, uh, via vehicle, um, you're greeted by the new and, um, the new community and learning center. Uh, there is just over sixty feet of grade change, which is a key component of this site. That's between the lower portion at Meadow Street here, all the way up to the northern portion. Again, that sixty-foot grade change. Um, some of the key goals that were set during the master planning and then maintained through the project was to provide ADA access from the right-of-way, so from Meadow Street to the community center, to the parking spaces, and to nearly all units, the unit entries. We have stepped the site, um, through this through this, uh, goal. We've stepped the site, and in each of these locations, there's about three levels. Uh, at each of these locations, there's parking, uh, trash enclosures located here, here, and here, um, and then accessible parking in close proximity to the Community and Learning Center, and then in close proximity to, um, as I mentioned, these levels and these units. Another goal was to create a continuous open space and amenity space that was connected to the Community and Learning Center, and then really accessible to all all residents. So that's located here in the center. Um, again, directly, uh, adjacent to and connected to this Community Learning Center. Uh, we met with the tenants in the summer of twenty twenty-three to get an understanding of any, you know, desired amenities, what we were thinking, what they may be adding. Um, and and started to integrate that into this into this, what we are calling the green spine. And then a final goal to mention is, um, we look to maintain a lot of the existing mature vegetation and steep slopes that are noted here in this, uh, to the north and then along the property lines. Create a little bit of a buffer and maintain that buffer between the residential and then, uh, adjacent properties. And then within the site, um, you can see here, uh, adding additional trees, plantings within both, uh, parking areas, and then that green spine here. Um, and then supplementing and adding to that, uh, that buffer plantings. And then finally, just to touch on, um, site lighting, creating a safe and secure property was very important, um, from the onset of the project. We've made, we've created this through, uh, a series of pedestrian poles, and then in the center here, having a little bit more of a a lower scale with ballards. Um, so kind of that combination of pedestrian, ballards, and architectural lighting. Turn it over to Brian.
Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, Brian Phillips with Langen Engineering in New Haven. Um, you know, Kristen gave a nice overview. I'll just kind of run through, you know, some of the engineering as well. This is an image of the site survey, um, a lot going on on here, but you know, those contour lines indicating that, you know, there's about sixty feet of grade change. And with that, you know, currently, there are a few routes on the site which are, um, ADA accessible. And, you know, driving in this sort of serpentine drive aisle, um, is, you know, a little bit difficult. So we tried to maintain that existing driveway and kept sort of the general routing of the site. Um, you know, just because of the, um, existing, uh, topography. And I I don't think it was mentioned, but we are providing, um, eight electric vehicle charging spaces, um, and the, uh, code-applicable ADA parking spaces, as well as, you know, the accessible routes, uh, as Kristen mentioned.
What is what is the level of the, um, uh, charging stations?
That I do not know offhand.
Um, I think
It'll at least be level one. Uh, we can follow up with our Civil Engineer to see what would be required to increase that to a level-two charger.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moving on to the next page, the grading and drainage plan. Currently, the site is there are, there is some stormwater infrastructure on site. Um, traditional catch basin and pipe network, everything sort of drains as you're looking at the plan from plan north to south to Meadow Street. Um, we're maintaining that existing site hydrology, um, slightly increasing impervious, but we are providing an underground detention system, which will capture roof water and surface water, um, and promote infiltration. Um, beyond that, water quality improvements include catch basins with sumps. We have a a water quality unit. Um, and we are reducing both flow and volume for stormwater. Um, so utility plan, you know, more or less in keeping with the current, um, site, you know, all new utilities, uh, water, gas, electric, uh, from Meadow Street. And finally, the site will be proposing, uh, a robust, um, erosion control plan during construction with self-fence, construction entrances, inlet protection, et cetera. Thank you. Then I think Adam?
Yep, correct. Good evening, everyone. Adam Palmer with Amenta Emma Architects. So here, we're going back to the the colored site plan that Kristen presented earlier. Um, to reiterate what what was talked about, um, some of the elements of the site. Um, we could have considered them constraints or limitations, but what we tried to do was look at them as design opportunities on how to make better use of the existing conditions on the site, most important being the change in elevation from the roadway up to the top of the site being sixty feet. So we looked at a way to create level areas that run um, right to left across the site so that we could access the buildings at grade from multiple sides of the building. So here on the left-hand side of this site diagram is Meadow Street. On the right-hand side is the top higher portion of our site. So we have, uh, buildings along Meadow Street. There are two stories to meet the zoning regulations in terms of building size and height along the street edge. Then we have our parking and drive aisle. And then in the middle of the site, we have two buildings that then front on the parking lots on the sides, and then in the middle, they front on the green corridor. So here we're using the change in elevation so that the residential units can be accessed at grade on both sides of the building, mixing, uh, one-story flats on the lowest level of the building and two-story townhouses on the second and third story of the buildings as he then move up into the site. And now we're allowed to provide three-story buildings. This makes best use of the site. It activates all sides of the buildings and all aspects of the site, and it provides, um, liveliness around the entire property and allows there to be eyes on on all sides of the buildings so that it feels more like a community um, on, you know, front, back, left, and right of the site, rather than just a large multifamily building that feels out of place and out of context. Here's just a little diagram of of, you know, how we were able to accomplish that. Again, the lowest level of the residential buildings in blue being a flat uh, mix of one, two, three, and four bedrooms, depending on which building type uh, we we have around the site. And then the second and third floors would be a townhouse style. Um, again, access to that grade because of the topography, but also this allows us to give each resident their own front door. They're not coming into a common corridor with shared space. They all have their sense of, um, arrival when they come home at the end of the day. Uh, just one of the the residential buildings, again, showing in floor plan, how we were able to, on the ground floor, provide a flat. Here we have two units side by side, each with their own door. We have a four-bedroom on the left, a three-bedroom on the right. Then moving up, uh, to the next two floors, this building uh, is at the very top of the site. So here we have a three-story building. Um, so for floors two and three, we have four, um, units accessed at grade that are townhouse style, two two of them being three bedrooms, two of them being two bedrooms. So again, we're mixing different unit types, different, um, makeups for the the different families that, um, can live in these units and not just sticking all of, you know, one building type, one unit type in one corner of the site, and then letting the rest of the site have a variety. Then looking at the elevations, um, working with the zoning requirements for building height, um, from the average grade, and then looking at the style of the building, trying to blend it with the surrounding residential neighborhood. We didn't want to come in with, uh, a massive five-story building that would really feel out of place, especially where we're working with grade change throughout the site, um, the thought of having a building that's sitting thirty feet above the road, that's then, you know, multiple stories above what's around it. We wanted to be, um, sensitive to what was around us, um, mixing um, a style that makes it feel like it's a number of townhouses or row houses that are budding up to each other and not one large monolithic building. Here we have a conceptual rendering of what we're calling the Green Corridor, the Green Boulevard. Uh, this is that green spine that connects the site from left to right on that site plan. It goes, um, underneath the, um, the community center and then down along in between the residential buildings. Again, trying to bring more liveliness, more sense of community to the entire property, um, rather than just your typical, um, building surrounded by a parking lot. Uh, we wanted there to be something a little bit more special to this property. And then coming back down to a perspective from Meadow Street. Here we're showing, um, the the residential buildings that front Meadow Street, and then task getting behind that, you get the the field, the other residential buildings and the community center. Important to note here, um, we are raising the, um, ground floor level for the residential units along Meadow Street to get them up and out of the floodplain. Um, so that the buildings are more robust and can last, um, throughout any of the the predicted storm events for this portion of Norwalk. And with that, we will turn it over to Lisa, I believe.
Yes, thank you so much, Adam.
Just one thing, Lisa, beforehand, um, excuse me for interrupting you. We could just have Steve Sapola provide information on this analysis, and then Lisa, it's all yours.
Okay, uh, let me just share my screen. Okay, uh, good, good evening. Uh, for the for the record, Steve Sapola, Senior Traffic Engineer with Hardisty in Hanover. We conducted the traffic evaluation, uh, for the proposed expansion of Meadow Gardens. Um, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, so this is Meadow Gardens, and then this is Meadow Street, which is a state-maintained highway, uh, State Route one thirty-six. Um, as mentioned, uh, the the existing development has fifty-four units and a fourteen-hundred-square-foot, uh, community center. Uh, proposal is to add two additional units and increase the, uh, community center to seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh, we conducted, uh, traffic counts at the existing site driveway as well as we counted, uh, uh, movements for cars parked along the se- the site frontage and in front of the park because a lot of residents currently park on-street. Um, let me go to the next page. So from the from the traffic counts,
Sorry, Steve, can you enlarge that for us a little bit?
Sure, hold on one second.
Thank you.
Better? Okay, um, so from our existing traffic counts, uh, um, which, um, including, uh, on on-street, uh, movements, uh, uh, Meadow Gardens currently is, uh, generating thirty-two vehicles in the morning and fifty-four in the afternoon. Um, so, uh, we developed a trip rate based on the existing fifty-four units, and then we use that trip rate to expand out to the, uh, proposed fifty-six units, or the additional two units, which results in an additional two vehicles, both in the morning and afternoon. Um, as part of the community center, uh, there'll be two, uh, new staff members, and also the property management office, uh, will be located there, so an additional two employees. So to be conservative, we assumed that they would arrive in the morning and depart in the afternoon. So the, uh, proposed, uh, expansion is estimated to generate a total of s- six vehicle trips, both in the morning and afternoon, uh, peak hours. Uh, the addition of, uh, six vehicle trips, uh, when they're distributed out, uh, is not anticipated to, um, have a significant impact on the surrounding roadways and adjacent intersections. And the site driveway is expected to operate similarly to it does currently today. Um, and, um, I I, um, also, um, I forgot to mention, the site driveway will not change from its current condition. Um, the site driveway in the future will be maintained at its current location. In addition, we did, we did parking counts at, um, uh, in both, um, onsite and as well as on-street, uh, Meadow Street, uh, we conducted our parking counts, um, in June of twenty twenty-three at, uh, nine PM. Uh, at the request of TMP, we adjusted those out to a hundred percent peak parking demand, uh, based on the IT time of day distribution. Uh, based on that, we are, uh, our existing parking count is sixty-two, um, parking spaces occupied at a hundred percent peak parking demand, which is typically from eleven o'clock at night to five, six o'clock in the morning. Um, projecting out for the additional two units, uh, the requirement would be an additional force, uh, an additional two spaces. We also looked at IT, uh, the latest edition, uh, Parking Generation Manual. And for this type of development, the average, uh, parking ratio is one point two-one spaces per unit, uh, which would require sixty-eight parking spaces. We are providing seventy-nine onsite parking spaces, which comes out to a parking demand of one point three-six spaces, and one point three spaces are required per code. Um, based on our parking analysis, uh, there should be sufficient onsite parking provided to meet the proposed demand for the fifty-six units. And that does not include, you know, the on, uh, the on-street parking. So we have enough onsite parking for the whole development. Um, if there's any questions, or I'll pass it along to Lisa.
Uh, how many, how many, uh, onsite parking spaces are there currently?
There are currently fifty-four.
Thank you.
Um, yeah.
Can you clarify if there are seventy-nine proposed spaces or seventy-four? I think we, uh, saw seventy-four on one of the earlier plans that was shown.
Yes, I think Steve, this might have been, um, just to jump in, this, I think this was created in in June. We've evolved, um, with, you know, based on fire truck movements and, um, addition of trap trash locations. It's now at seventy-four spaces, which still meets the one point three requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, JJ.
Oh, okay, um, so since we're talking about parking and assuming that there will be designated parking for, um, handicap, um, I'm wondering, will there also be any wheelchair ramps? Um, you know, in front of these buildings to allow those who have disabilities to go in and out of their units with ease?
If I could jump in on that one, um, so yes, we have, uh, accessible parking. We have two at the top level, two at the bottom level in close proximity to the Community and Learning Center, and then one, um, at that other location in the mid mid-area, middle area. Um, if you don't mind, I can share my screen. And, um, there's no, uh, no need for ramps or, um, they're they're all, um, they're wheelchair accessible, uh, to those units.
Okay, so, um, I guess that follows that that leads me segues into another question I have. Will any of these units be senior citizen designated where, you know, um, they're set aside for for seniors?
No, that's not currently the plan. This is really meant to replace the public housing tenants for the families who live there.
But you're adding two more units.
Um, we're, I think it's something that we could look at, but right now we're hoping to serve families.
Right, um, would love to see something that's also serving seniors.
Understood.
Thank you.
Maybe that's a segue into my part, Liz.
Absolutely. Does anyone have any questions of Kristen or Brian, um, or Steve or Adam at this point? Great, hearing down to Lisa.
Thank you, Liz. Hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Endo. I'm Head of Development for Sound Communities, which is an affiliate of Norwalk Housing Authority. And we're very excited to present the redevelopment of Meadow Gardens to you all. Um, so just thank you for your time. Meadow Gardens was built over fifty years ago. It is not in great condition, um, and the people who live there, quite frankly, deserve better. HUD has given us the green light to demolish these buildings and build new ones. And just to let you know, there's a pretty high bar set by HUD to be allowed to demolish public housing. So just know that, um, this is in desperate need of redevelopment. First and foremost, we're doing this to improve the quality of life of our tenants. There are eighty-one children who live at Meadow Gardens today. So this is a family development. Uh, we have folks who have lived there for over twenty years. Um, but this is also about ensuring that we maintain these very low-income units in South Norwalk, where we've seen a lot of market rate development. Our tenants earn on average thirty thousand dollars a year. So while the new development won't be public housing, it will still be restricted to these very low-income households. We're also building three- and four-bedroom units, which are very hard to find in Norwalk, um, especially at affordable rents. We're adding parking, as you've heard, which has been an issue at the property, and we're adding new amenities and features that were all selected by the tenants at a meeting with Amenta. and we're adding new amenities and features that were all selected by the tenants at a meeting with Amenta Emma and Langen. Uh, so we hope that you see that this project will enhance the neighborhood, that it complements the style of the single-family homes in the area, and also that it complements the investments that the city is making, such as in the South Norwalk Community School just down the street, um, the complete streets, bike lanes, tree canopies, and all of the other things, um, that the city has going on, which we're very grateful for. We've already begun relocating tenants. Twenty-five percent have been moved off-site or have identified their relocation units. Um, I'm actually gonna let a tenant speak here in just a minute. Tenants are using vouchers to rent apartments during this period. We've hired counselors to work individually with, with each household to find them new units. Um, Sound Communities is paying for moving expenses, packing supplies, application fees, security deposits, all of it. Um, Diana Varone, who's here with us tonight and who I'll ask to come off mute, actually moved into her new u- new unit today, uh, so she's probably exhausted, and I'm very grateful that she made the time to attend. Um, Diana, if you can come off mute, do you want to say a few words? She's actually listed as Lisa Endo, because I shared my link with her.
Uh, hi, I'm here. Good evening, uh, my name is Diana Varone. I have lived in Meadow Gardens for five years. I think it's, it's a very good idea to fix the Meadow Gardens apartments, because right now they're in, their conditions are very bad. The plans they showed us in the meeting look very beautiful. Norwalk Housing is giving us a big opportunity to get the Section A voucher to find a place to live. The new apartment where I am going is quiet and clean. My daughter and I are going to be safe and secure. If we had the opportunity to return, we will come back, because we, we never have a problems at Meadow Gardens. The problem is the parking and the conditions of the housing. Yeah, thank you for the support for this project.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Diana.
Thank you.
Lisa, I, I'm not sure I understand the difference between what this housing will be and what public housing is.
Sure, so it has to do with the subsidies or the, the funding sources that are used. Um, essentially, um, public housing is, you know, dr- I mean, Adam, you can also probably explain this better, but, um, public housing is dependent on Congress passing funding for it, and so it becomes a sort of less than stable source of housing. Um, and so what we're doing here is using low-income housing tax credits to redevelop the property, which provide more, more, um, equity to build the project, but also, um, we'll be able to sustain the project by using the vouchers that the tenants have been given. So it's, it's sort of a technical, um, financing mechanism that a lot of housing authorities are doing, because so many public housing developments are quite old and very hard to maintain, given the lack of funding from Congress.
Now, let, let me just, uh, just add, jump in for just a second. Um, in public housing, the subsidy we receive from HUD is approximately two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, an operating subsidy per unit, um, and a similar amount per month in capital, um, subsidy, uh, um, uh, per, per unit. So between four-hundred and five-hundred or so dollars in subsidy per unit that we receive, and the rest is paid by the tenants based on thirty percent of their income, um, uh, uh, the vouchers tend to be a subsidy closer to fourteen-hundred dollars per unit per month. So the units that will have vouchers will have a much higher subsidy, which means that not only are we gonna be able to, uh, uh, provide brand-new, beautiful housing, but that we should be able to maintain it at a much higher level and provide, uh, uh, providing services also to the, to the tenants. Um, so the subsidy, it's, it's, it's about the redevelopment, it's about the new building, but it's really also about that, that, that subsidy for the units that will have it. Um, uh, and every tenant has a right to return, so they, uh, so they can take their voucher, they can move off-site, or they can move into public housing, whichever, uh, works best for them. And then when the new development is, is complete, um, they will have a right to return, and we really want them as many to return as possible, because, uh, when they return, that's when that, that very valuable subsidy gets, uh, attached to the new development.
Thank you. Adam, does it also decrease the, the rent?
Uh, uh.
The larger subsidy, no?
No, if, if they're gonna end up with the, the voucher subsidy in their unit, um, really, it's calculated almost identically to public housing. So they'll be paying thirty percent of their income towards rent plus utilities, um, and, uh, uh, and, and, and the rest picked up by the, by the subsidy, by the voucher.
So, um, question. Um, but I see Mike's hand is up too. Mike, do you want to go first?
No, no, please, you go, thanks.
Okay, so I actually have a two-part question for Adam. So, um, you said that, um, all tenants will have the right to return. Uh, is there certain metric that you go by in terms of eligibility?
Uh, so, I, I wouldn't frame it in, in terms of eligibility. Uh, um, the, the way I would, would frame it is, in fact, what, what are the reasons we're gonna be moving from having all three-bedroom units to this mix of one, twos, threes, and fours, particularly the fours, is, is to meet the actual demographics of who's living in the development? Um, really, the goal is for everyone to return. We'd love for everyone to return. Um, and it's generally not an eligibility issue, it's, it's, uh, it's more of a, a, a tenant-choice issue. Um, some of the tenants who receive these vouchers and move into, um, alternate private housing with their subsidy, um, some of them grow roots there, some of them, you know, may like it there better and just choose not to return. So it's really more about tenant-choice than, uh, than anything else.
So, there, is, is there a good-standing kind of, um, criteria?
There is, uh, um, there is tenants who get evicted for cause between now and their move would not be eligible. Um, and, uh, tenants who, um, they'd have to do something really dramatic, but someone who, who did something dramatically bad in their private residence could also, in theory, become ineligible. Uh, but that's, it, it's very rare.
Okay, and in the event that you do find someone who, a family who was living there, who is now, um, not of good standing and does not meet the standard to, um, of eligibility, what will, what will happen to those units? Do they go to the public in order to fill?
Yeah, so th- that's correct. Um, depending on the type of unit, if there's a subsidy, a voucher subsidy in it, versus no voucher subsidy, it's, it would probably be a different list. Um, but the, it's, it would be a, a list available to the general public, um, with, uh, with income limits for the units, depending on which unit. Generally speaking, the limit's gonna be fifty percent of A M I, which is, um, uh, higher than most tenants who will likely enter the project, if that means, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
That's the, that's the same limit for both public housing and Section A, fifty percent of A M I.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike?
Yeah, um, so, hi, Adam, I have a, just a question of, um, at a very high level, I guess, of looking at this. I, you know this, but I, I don't think the public may be aware, or maybe some other commissioners may not be aware that, um, to take, uh, Washington Village Replacement as an example, uh, with Soundview Landing, that was Choice Neighborhoods, that was a HUD, um, grant, as you know. Um, but I remember when that, uh, I've been around long enough to remember the, uh, the debate and the hearings and the approval of that, uh, over ten years ago. And now it's built, and, you know, I think it was very successful. Uh, but one of the reasons for doing it, and that Choice Neighborhoods concentrated on, you know, which was administered by the federal government, was based on fifty or sixty years of research that mixed-income projects produce better outcomes for the children living there in terms of, because they've been able to follow them now for a couple, a few generations. Um, and this research has probably come out in the last twenty years, but I think it's pretty, um, solid in that, uh, concentrated poverty, uh, produces lower, uh, eventual outcomes for the children, uh, economic opportunity, uh, earning power, uh, and even as children, uh, test scores, uh, uh, among the children. So I, I would just ask you to justify the keeping of this project as totally low, low-income housing, and how you're gonna work, like, what is different than this? Because I've always understood that we are no longer billed concentrated poverty, like, all, all affordable housing in one large, uh, uh, you know, place or location, um, for the reasons that I just gave. And how, how would this be different? Because it seems to me, if you, if it's all subsidized housing, and, um, I, I would imagine that a large number of people are, would be at or below the poverty level. How, how do you, uh, alleviate that? And, and I'll just add that at Washington Village, I thought, or at Soundview Landing, I thought one of the great things was, they were gonna have, um, and I assume that that's still the case, that, that now that it's built, but they had onsite, um, uh, counseling, onsite security. They basically created a better environment, and with the mixed-income market rate and, and subsidized together, you had, um, less of those social issues, uh, that occur, like gangs and drug use, et cetera, that happened that are, you know, uh, it's not my opinion, it's, it's substantiated, uh, in, in concentrated low-income housing. Um, and I, and I think Soundview Landing's done a good job of that, it's ongoing. Um, it, how is this different? Like, how, how are you justifying that this is going to be? It's a long, long question, but I think you know what I'm after. I just want to have some confidence from, from you that this is the right path and not doing a mixed-income, uh, uh, a project here.
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, and I'm, I'm gonna give you two different answers to the, to the question. Uh, the first, the first answer to the question is, uh, to distinguish Meadow Gardens from Washington Village or from a Choice Neighbors Initiative project. Uh, Choice Neighbors Initiative is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful program. Um, uh, you know, with part of that program, we received a thirty-million-dollar grant. Um, there's no grant at Meadow Gardens, um, and, uh, uh, nothing, at least from HUD of, of that nature. Um, uh, and Choice Neighborhoods requires you to double-plus-one the number of units in the development. So at Washington Village originally had a hundred-and-thirty-six units. Choice Neighbors Initiative had Soundview Landing has two-hundred-and-seventy-three units. So we were able to keep all one-hundred-and-thirty-six low-income units. So no family, um, was at risk of not being allowed to return, and we're still serving the same number of low-income families. But then on top of that, um, we had, uh, uh, you know, twenty-five percent of the development was market rate, and twenty-five percent was affordable at different levels. Um, so the, the funding from the HUD through that Choice Neighbors Initiative, as well as the geography, um, you may recall that the city, we received, um, several public parcels of land from the city, uh, so that we were able to, uh, build up and build across in different areas, uh, again, making it possible to double-plus-one the number of units. Um, at Meadow Gardens, we're dealing with a very different topography, um, a very different neighborhood, um, and, uh, and no thirty-million-dollar grant to leverage, um, uh, as we have here. So one answer to your question is, is simply logistics. Um, the site wouldn't support it, um, and, and even if it did, uh, um, you know, we, 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 if we were to, rather, if we were to try to turn Meadow Gardens into mixed income, we would have to reduce the number of low-income units, um, which is not something that I think is appropriate for the Housing Authority to, to be looking to do. Um, uh, we don't have enough housing, our wait lists tend to be years-long. Many of them are closed most of the time for years at a time, because we simply don't have enough housing. So, um, if we could increase the number of units, um, I would be advocating for it to be mixed income, but that's, that's not the case here. Um, so, so again, it's, it's financial feasibility, it's logistics of the site itself, um, and it's really a core commitment by the Housing Authority, uh, to serve, uh, to serve the, the, to not reduce the number of units we're providing to the low-income. That makes sense.
Yeah, that, okay, good, that's, that's a good answer, thank you. Um, and explains, yeah, it's just not feasible, basically, yeah, to, to do that here. But can you, can you, um, explain? Because I saw there was parking for two employees, staff members that are gonna be there, uh, I guess, every day. Are they, do they currently have onsite staff? Uh, and, and is there's an improvement in terms of supervision and security? I'm not suggesting those are problems there now, but I'm just saying that it, it seems like the improvement, uh, certainly the quality of housing is gonna be much greater, and the entrances, everybody having their own entrance, I mean, I can see the benefit of this. I can see the benefit of the layout of the buildings, because they're concentrated around observable spaces that everybody, well, sociologists and people who study public housing that know that that spine that's up the middle is going to be, uh, an observable space. It'll be, it won't be as dangerous as some playground that's up, up the hill like you have now that where kids gather and drink, I'm, you know, like what I used to do when I was a kid, I'm, you know, you know, everybody always wants to go somewhere and hide away from their parents, that I can see all the benefits of the layout that you've done, but are you gonna be adding staff or doing something else above and beyond what is there now in terms of su- making sure that that community stays, uh, stays safe and secure?
Yeah, so, uh, about two-and-a-half decades ago, the Norwalk Housing Authority, um, as a, as a, as a, really for, for financial reasons, started to, uh, centralize and concentrate staff in the main office. Um, and we, we, we went from a, a previous model of having staff, management staff in all the developments, to having management staff really just at the, at the main office. Again, that was a cost-saving measure done at the time. Um, and it's something that we're trying to reverse now. We believe that the sites, I mean, all the sites have, of course, maintenance staff and learning center staff, or that's, that, for the sites, uh, or, or more really. Um, but it's not the same as having management on the ground, in the buildings, in the developments, there to help keep an eye on things. So that has been a priority, and there will be management staff in the community building. Um, uh, it's part of our commitment to returning to this, um, this, uh, example of having management at each of the developments. Soundview Landing has management onsite, um, Oak Grove that we're, uh, that we've just broken ground on, um, not officially, but if you go over there, you'll see all the construction equipment. Um, uh, you know, that's gonna have management onsite, and Meadow Gardens will have management onsite. And you're right, uh, we put a lot of thought into security, uh, and where people, you know, where, where are there places that are out of sight versus in sight? Um, one of the biggest complaints that we received initially at Soundview Landing from the old Washington Village residents is that they used to have these courtyards between the buildings, you may remember, it's a little bit of a concrete jungle. Um, but the tenant said, you know, hey, they opened the door, the kid would run outside, and they'd all play with their friends in these sort of communal areas. They still have Ryan Park, um, the last buildings to go up, Buildings D and E, do you have a courtyard between them at Soundview Landing? Um, but again, the initial complaints from some of the tenants was that it felt a little bit too much like a hotel, where they weren't as encouraged to really interact with their neighbors. And that's something that that green way, that green spine, as they described it, going through the, the development is designed to be a safe space, a community space, um, and really returning to that, that, again, this, this idea of people being able to, um, have their kids run outside and play together in a safe environment inside the development. Um, so, so I hope that answered your question.
It does, thank you very much, uh, you, you answered it very well, thanks.
Uh, Richard, and then Tammy?
Yes, I, I had a multi-part question as well, except it's been answered about four times, so I'll just ask you the last part. Um, what is the increase in bedrooms? There's only two more units on this, but I noticed that you said that there were many four-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, and I'm just wondering how the number of bedrooms in this new project compares to what was there.
I'm gonna defer to, to, to Lisa for that one.
I'm gonna defer to Adam Palmer on that one.
Okay, I'll take that one and not defer any further. Um, so we are going from one-hundred-and-fifty-two bedrooms now down to, I think it's one-forty-six, because right now, all fifty-four units are three-bedrooms. Now we're providing a mix of one, two, three, and four-bedroom units. The, um, number of four-bedroom units was based upon the number of families who live at Meadow Gardens now, who are eligible for four-bedroom units. And then we fa- uh, put a priority on as many three-bedroom units as possible, um, so that we didn't load up the property with one-bedroom units and not serve the population accordingly. Um, so we have the, the bulk of our units are three-bedroom, and then a mix of two and one-bedroom to get. a mix of two and one-bedroom to get to our fifty-six unit count that we are proposing now.
So I'm sorry, if you said the totals, I lost it. What what was the the difference?
Uh we're reducing the overall count by eight beds.
Okay. But more three bedrooms, that's that's the idea.
We're from what, it's fewer three bedrooms because right now the current property is all three bedrooms.
Oh.
It's more four bedrooms, there there there's have been no four, we don't have enough four bedrooms, period. It's a real problem for the Housing Authority as an agency, plus the demographics of who lives there now. Because a family that moves in, they have more kids, people move out, their demographics change as they stay in the development. We can't always find um uh places for them to move quickly, so uh the new development is designed to meet the needs of the actual population as it exists, even though we're changing from all three bedrooms to a a mix.
It surprises me the number of bedrooms went down, but it makes a lot of sense what you just said about serving the population you're looking to serve, so thank you.
It's the kids grow up and move out on their own over time.
No, they don't.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Um I have a couple of questions kind of going in different directions. And I understand that HUD is requiring this complex to be torn down, which it's only fifty-five years old. Who ultimately in the life of this current complex was responsible for maintaining it, and why did it come in such bad repair in only fifty-five years that we have to now tear it down? Because it's rather unenvironmentally friendly.
Um uh so so just a quick clarification. Um we believe that desperately needed to be torn down. There were major structural issues, including moisture getting into the building. But HUD did not require it to be torn down. We asked their permission, and their permission was granted based on the 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 rather substantial needs of the building. This is just a clarification on 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 what you said, but uh um to answer your question, uh HUD has underfunded public housing across the country uh for many, many, many decades. They do a calculation of how much funding we need, and then they take a percentage of that and just give us sort of less. Um it's based on how much Congress allocates to public housing and to Section Eight and these other programs. And so it's really been underfunded for many, many decades. Um on top of that, the Norwalk Housing Authority, for the last twenty-eight years, has really started to prioritize education. Um this is all long before my time, but has put a lot of priority in education and spent a lot of funding from the capital and and operations uh budgets on that educational funding um uh uh educational programming with the goal of helping families move out of public housing, uh increase it and become more uh independent. Um and that prioritization also played into the uh the the functionality of all of our buildings, really.
Okay, well, with all due respect, if people stay there for twenty years, it doesn't seem like that there is not a lot of turnover. Um and I guess it's, I just think it's a shame that the buildings haven't been maintained, whether, I'm sorry if you guys are responsible and you don't get enough HUD money. Um but sort of what is the incentive for somebody to move out of the of the housing? And then we hear constantly that there's a shortage of housing at all price points. So did you consider adding a fourth floor to all of those buildings or actually making a nine-hundred-one-bedroom, nine-hundred-square-foot, one-bedroom unit smaller, so maybe make it six-hundred-and-fifty square feet or seven-hundred square feet, and you could probably get a few more units into the complex. I know you don't want it to be towering tall, but look at what they're doing up at Merit Seven, Merit Six, sorry, they're gonna build, you know, an eleven-to-fifteen-story building. So a four-story building in South Norwalk doesn't seem that out of the question. Maybe you don't do it at the building at the top of the hill because it would seem like it would loom over, but why not try to add a few more units in here?
I'm gonna just jump in at this point. We wanted to be sure that we complied with the current regulations and did not come to this commission with uh text amendments uh for a, that would then be applicable citywide for the de-resident zone or to seek variances. We wanted to make sure that the project was fully compliant and did not need that that additional relief. Plus, if you add more units, that means more parking. More parking means more hard surface, and there, it's that that push and pull and that tug of providing units, and then you have to provide parking. So they, I think the idea was to make sure that the project complied without any additional relief sought. And and that's why we came to the the elevations and the the heights and the number of stories that we did.
I almost prefaced my say, my question, Liz, by saying, and don't tell me it's all about parking because we do talk a lot about parking in this uh commission, but um you know, public transportation, we're we're trying to advocate for all of uh that type of of living. Um, okay, so I appreciate what you said. Um.
Tammy, I think it's a really good point, like and and thinking about this, especially as we're looking to the rewrite, like it sounds like the possibility to build more here would have been there had you know, they had to not need to comply or provide so much parking in square footage. So I think it's something for us to just consider.
There's also a lot of on-street parking right there.
But they can't count that, right? They're not allowed to count that. That's kind of like, we currently don't allow that. Unfortunately, right? I mean, that's that's my own personal preference on that, but but we have the ability to change that as we're looking forward in the rewrite to encourage more of these developments to do what exactly what you're saying, like filling that gap.
Sure. Um and um Adam, I I just want to clarify. You, as the Housing Authority, did did not or are not going to receive any HUD money for this project? You you got the thirty million, that was for Soundview Landing, but there's nothing here?
There there is a a exceptionally valuable HUD subsidy in that they have given us fifty-four uh vouchers. They're called tenant protection vouchers. Um those are being used to move the families off-site who can and and choose to move off-site um during the the demolition and construction. And uh to the extent feasible, we're bringing all of those, as many of those as we can back into the development. Um and again, right now, we're averaging around fourteen hundred per per voucher per month. So this HUD subsidy is fourteen hundred um times fifty-four for the life of the of the vouchers in the project. So th- we're not receiving um uh HUD money really other than that. Uh there are a variety of other, but there are a variety of other grants um uh and funding sources that we have looked to. Uh we do have a, Lisa's an eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, I believe, dollar earmark in the federal budget um that Congressman Himes has helped us to obtain. Um uh if the federal budget passes, then that is something that, in its current form, then that's something that we would be able to receive. We'll be applying for SIF funding through the state. Um there's a, so there's a, there's a wide variety of funding sources that we're looking to, uh but not it's not like a CNI uh grant from HUD like we had previously.
And and would those, the eight-seventy-five and other sources of funding go to actually build these units, or would they go to subsidize the rent?
Uh the eight-seventy-five is 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 part of our construction budget. Um currently, we're looking to use that for um demolition and site work. And then the um the SIF grant, should it be awarded, should we receive that, uh would go towards the building of the community space, community center.
Okay, and I I thought I might have seen the cost of this um project somewhere, but then when I went back and reread it, I couldn't find it. Do you know what the total cost is approximately?
Um yeah, it's approximately, Lisa, forty-two million. Is that roughly?
Forty-two million. So it's well over like five hundred and five hundred thousand dollars a unit.
Yeah, and then that, a a lot of that, um uh and I might defer to 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 Adam Palmer or or Miles on this, but a lot of the cost has to do with the site work. Um this is a very, very, I think it's seven million dollars estimated currently in site work, and that's based on the topography and the buildings that need to be taken down and environmental concerns with those buildings.
Okay, I'm gonna go totally off the rails, but we've talked about this before in our commission that we're trying to encourage homeownership and building equity. If you could take five hundred thousand dollars per fifty-six families that are there and set them up in something that they own, wouldn't that help build equity and kind of move people forward in life? Rather than giving them a rental subsidy for the next twenty-five years?
Uh yes, there's a lot to be said for homeownership, and and the Housing Authority has a homeownership program um that is perhaps a topic for another another day. Um but we also don't have five hundred thousand dollars for homeownership for each family. That's not how the funding is coming to us. We're getting a lot of it in um low-income housing tax credits. You can't really, uh it it would be very difficult to apply those in the same way to homeownership as we are now to to building and renting this space. So um we strongly believe in homeownership. Uh we think it's a great way for families to get um to help themselves out of poverty. Um and again, we do have a homeownership program. It just doesn't seem feasible with this uh with this uh site.
Okay, thank you.
Uh any other questions at this point?
Um I just, I um I just wanna say, Tammy, that was a a a great point that you made in regards to um the the route that they're going, you know, rental versus homeownership. Because um I'm I'm also agreeing that there was, there could have been a way to um to have the the homeownership, maybe with less units. But you know, provide a pathway to homeownership for those in the area, so this way they can stay and not be on this constant loop of moving and the kids being outwitted.
Um Chapin, is something you wish to say?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh most of my questions have been answered through the discussion, so thanks, everyone. Appreciate that. Um uh first one is, what's the, what's the timeline for development? You've mentioned twenty-five percent of residents have uh moved out already. I'm just curious uh what the timeline is for development to when they could possibly move back in.
Yeah, thank you. Um we're hoping to have everyone relocated by early summer and then quickly um demolish and begin uh new construction late summer twenty-twenty-four. And right now, we're estimating an eighteen-month construction timeline.
Okay. Um. Maybe this was mentioned in some of the funding discussion before, and I missed uh the exact piece, but um I I know for some of our projects where developers elect to have eighty percent um as the threshold for their workforce housing instead of sixty percent, there's a like thousand-dollar um per hundred-thousand-dollar rate. I can't remember the exact fee. Uh are those fees um supporting this project or the Housing Authority? Maybe that's not a question for the applicants. Uh I can save that for later, but.
Chapin, to the, to the extent that I understand it, um none of those funds have been spent yet.
Understood, okay.
Apparently, a committee needs to be established to determine how those funds are to be spent, and that has not happened.
Okay, thanks. Um. I saw that there was a a mention of uh solar on the uh community space, uh but not on the residential units as of yet. Um and uh implication was that uh if funding becomes available to to make those uh uh residential units have solar panels on their roofs as well, is that right?
That's correct. Um and we are including um electrical accommodations in the project to make the building solar-ready, so that there will be a path from the roof to an inverter, to electrical panel, um so that we're not trying to retrofit these buildings in three or four years' times if a new um a new source for solar panels becomes available. We're putting that in the building now, making sure that any conduit that's built in is oversized within reason to accommodate whatever may be coming in the near future.
Glad to hear it.
Sorry, so does that mean these buildings will have solar when they're presently built?
Not the residential buildings, per se, uh but the the infrastructure inside the buildings will be in place to accommodate future solar panels.
Future solar, thank you.
JJ?
Oh yeah, I just have one last question. So you 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 mentioned about the EV charging stations. How many will there be?
There are eight.
And, okay, well, okay, so will they be open to the public?
They'd be for the residents, and state statute requires ten percent of the units, um a ten percent of the total units. There have, the total units, there have to be ten percent charging stations, so there would have to be six, so we're providing eight. And they're for the the residents of the the complex.
Oh, okay, so people from the outside cannot utilize them.
Well, I suspect if a guest arrives, but I I don't think the Housing Authority would like to have just anyone coming into the site on on this property and and parking him for other security and other reasons, it would be for the residents only, generally speaking.
Okay, thank you for that.
Welcome.
Chapin?
Yeah, going back to the uh the meters and the and the um additional work being done to prep for solar panels, even though they're they're not gonna be available initially. Um is the, are the meters gonna be set up in a way where um residents can benefit from the reduced uh electrical utility costs um on their on their monthly bills?
Yes, that would be the intention, and that's also what um Sound Communities and the Housing Authority is doing at our Oak Grove project. Um and while we weren't able to commit to solar on the residential units in time for this um hearing and the site plan that we submitted, I do, I do wanna say that there are tax credits out there specifically to um incentivize developers to include solar, and so we are, we feel pretty strongly that we'll get solar on the on the residences as well. And yes, they would benefit tenants because tenants have individual meters.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry, Luke, could I ask one more question, please?
Oh, go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you. Um regarding the um learning center for the children that live there, are the the people that work there, are they associated with the Norwalk Public School, and is that your source of funding? Or are they from the Carver Center? Where, where are the people from, and how are they tying into the school system?
Yeah, so the the Norwalk Housing Authority has run learning centers within its developments for twenty-eight years now. Um uh learning centers, uh we have a whole structure in uh it within the learning centers. There's um every learning center has a lead, has a, everyone has a um a state-certified reading coach, STEM coordinator, and art coordinator. Um we have a a robust tutoring program um done through Zoom. We have over forty volunteers uh um doing the tutoring program. Um and we are licensed by the State of Connecticut's Department of 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 early uh the Department of Early Child of early childhood, I think it's something like that. So we're we're licensed, and we're licensed by the state is what I'm trying to say. Um uh the funding uh comes in very small part, um I'd say maybe twenty, fifteen percent or so um from a a grant from the Department of Education of the state of Connecticut. Um and the rest is subsidized by our um public housing uh developments and their um their rent and subsidies that come in. So uh we do not receive um funding from the school system. We don't receive funding from the city. Um and that's, as I mentioned earlier, one of the reasons that um our buildings are rundown is the the focus has been trying to help families get out of the cycle of poverty, um uh and 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 we've put a lot of resources into into that.
Thank you.
Okay, um Liz, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everyone, for your questions and and your thoughtful um insights and suggestions. Uh before we open up to the public, I did neglect to say two things. We have had this project reviewed by the various CAC agencies, Code Enforcement Administration Committee. And and sign-offs have been received from SNU and the Health Department. Uh revised plans were sent to transportation, mobility, and parking. The uh Water Pollution Control Authority and Public Works last Friday. And yesterday and today, we received some very minor comments from those agencies, but I think those comments are and suggestions are those that can be incorporated into final plans. And certainly, you can make a condition of approval. If you so desire to approve this project, make those final approvals from TMP, WPCA, and DPW conditions of approval. At this point, I have nothing further to add. If you have any questions of any of the consultants tonight, we're certainly happy to continue to answer them. But we look forward to hearing any comments from the public. I would just ask for a minute of your time at the end to just summarize and and close out our hearing.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
One more question, Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, uh did you do like an energy audit of the existing buildings and have some idea of the projected energy usage of the new buildings? Because I imagine they're not very energy-efficient, uh the old ones, but have you, is that part of your long-term planning for here to save money off on energy costs? Uh let's not talk about solar right now, just in terms of the insulation and and uh, you know, I mean, those buildings are, they're flat-roofed and they're, they they look like they're not very well-designed.
Yeah, we haven't done an energy audit of the current buildings as is, but um in terms of energy efficiency, moving forward with the new design, we definitely have that figured in. Adam, if you wanna speak to what we've done.
Sure. So we have worked with a sustainable consultant to help us understand um how far beyond the CHFA requirements. They have certain requirements for energy efficiency in the building, energy efficiency of equipment, of appliances. Um so we've worked with them to see if we can go above and beyond the minimum that's required by CHFA. the minimum that's required by CHFA. Uh, so we're incorporating some of those elements, not all of them, because some of those do come with an increased price tag. But we're insulating the walls and the roof slightly above what's required by the Energy Code. We're providing um windows that are far superior to what's there now. I believe we're still looking at a triple-pane window system. We found a manufacturer that provides that increased level of insulation at um a fairly um con- conservative price. We're also um providing, you know, better insulated doors than what you have now, better insulation around the foundation compared to what's what's there today. Um, we're also made a move um with pretty strong direction from Lisa, which was very valid, to get away from the use of fossil fuels. So we are eliminating gas service to the site. Um, and we've worked with the sustainable consultant and our MEP, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Engineer, to develop um systems for the buildings that will be um energy-efficient and use the 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 energy source that's coming to the site in a in a very efficient way, so that we're not just saying, well, the least expensive thing to do is build this system. It actually is an energy hog, but it's cheap to build, so we're we're using that. And then in the end, the tenants pay high utility rates. So we're balancing that to make sure that what we're turning over to the tenants is um efficient and affordable for them for the long term.
Uh, thank you. That's a great answer, and I I imagine their heat pumps would probably be part of that system, right?
Correct.
So it's electric.
Correct.
Uh, you know, um w- we hear from the public that new new developments putting a strain um on all of our uh utilities. I think it's worth commenting and and um um uh certainly, as any of your consultants are welcome to speak to this, although I I'm not certain it's necessary. Uh, that where essentially you're replacing existing buildings. Um, for virtually all surface services, whether it's uh electric, although in this case you're not using gas, but electric, uh gas, um use of uh water, drainage, um all of these are improvements over the existing um buildings. Uh, and, excuse me, as a result, um, all of uh the city's utilities, uh everything from wastewater to to uh electricity um will will benefit. Uh, this will not harm the community. This will benefit uh the uh community, and I think uh before we turn this over to the public, it's it's worthwhile making that point. Okay, with that, um, this is a uh public hearing. Um uh, those who uh wish to speak, we will explain how uh to uh raise your hand uh to let staff know that you wish to speak. Uh, we don't limit uh how long you uh speak, but we do ask uh that you try to be brief while making all of the points that are uh important to you uh because you only have one opportunity to speak. Uh, and this is it. Um, we um also uh ask that you give us your name and uh address uh before you begin, and um that you um uh just show um uh restraint uh and if you will kindness um toward uh those you're speaking to uh when you make uh your uh comments. Uh, once you have completed uh your comments, if they include any questions, uh, the applicant um will have an opportunity to respond. Uh, and uh commission members will have another opportunity to ask any questions that they wish uh before we close out the public hearing and move to deliberation uh on the project. Uh, with that, um, Steve, uh can you explain um how folks can uh raise their hand to uh indicate they wish to speak?
Sure, there there's no one appeared to be dialing by phone, so anybody who wishes to uh participate they on the kind of on the lower part of your screen, towards the right-hand side, there is a raise-your-hand feature, little button, just click on that. Um we will then unmute unmute you and allow you to speak. So far, no takers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's um give it up just a few moments.
There's uh, do have one, Mr. Chin.
Okay.
Uh, good eve- good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, good evening, Diane Cece, Olmstead Place in Nowak. Um, good evening, everyone. I think my uh questions and comments are are mostly questions directed to um Adam Bolvilsky. Um one of which may not be relative at all unless um a question is answered first, Mr. Schulman, if that's agreeable to you. I I missed, I'm sorry, I had to hop on and off. I missed how many one-bedroom units are in the um the new development. If somebody can answer that, that may get rid of one of my questions, or not. I know it's not a dialogue, but.
Right, I, in this case, it would be appropriate for someone to just mention the number of uh one-bedroom units.
Mr. Chairman, proposed are four one-bedroom.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um and so and so one of my questions is um in the in the current configuration, I think you said that all of the units are currently three-bedroom um configurations. And so if there's an opportunity for um all of the existing tenants then to have um first dibs, for lack of a better term, for the new development, I wondered if, and this doesn't have to be a dialogue, but if you jot these down, I'd like answers. Um, if Mr. Bolvilsky can tell us of of the units that currently exist, how many of those three-bedroom units um are occupied by a single tenant?
Oh, um, uh ju- just the 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 general answer is.
Uh, Adam, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you. Um, uh, Ms. Cece is correct. This is not a dialogue between you and them. Let let her ask her questions. After all the questions uh have been asked of all the, by all the speakers, um, uh, you and uh your representatives um will will have an opportunity to answer uh those questions.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Schulman, but I would love it to be a dialogue, so I'll just get that on the record. Um, thanks. So anyway, Adam, good to see you, by the way. Um, so the, so that's uh my first question then is how many of those um current three-bedroom units that exist now um are occupied by a single uh tenant? Um, presumably, who would, you know, only need the one bedroom versus someone that has a need for two bedrooms? Um, if not all of the units um if not all of the tenants who are currently in the the um in the units return, I wasn't really clear on how that gets opened up um to additional tenants. Then I think you said that it moves off of the public housing list and goes into the open list for um low income. And one of the questions I had is if you've considered, let let's say that not all of the fifty-six um or fifty-eight, whatever that number is, if they're not all taken in by the existing tenants, have you considered or would you consider offering those first to low-income um housing tenants that reside in some of the other existing public housing units uh within the city? Um, before they get opened up to um to someone who isn't a part of the um of the network right now. Um in reference to the tenants that are already there, and I'm sorry, I may have missed this when I hopped off, but the, I I wondered I I believe you said that all of them are going to be given the opportunity to um have a new unit in the new development. And in the meantime, they would be, um, you're working with them in terms of relocation and vouchers, et cetera, elsewhere. And I wondered if someone can speak to that, because I, coincidentally, I was just on a, on a, oops, pardon me. I was just on a um another seminar that had to do, or another um meeting that had to do with affordable housing. Sorry, guys. Um and in that, um, on the affordable housing, it was through the ordinance committee, and they were talking about, it's actually the preamble to the new ordinance for the affordable housing um account that will help to fund um hopefully more affordable housing in the city. And one of the things in the preamble that they opened with was that how serious a housing crisis there is um in the country, but in particular Fairfield County, and in particular in Nowak. And um so I wondered if there is a guarantee right now of being able to uh place all of the fifty-six units um temporarily um locally. And um and then, of course, you know, whether they decide to come back and take advantage of the new units is a whole different um question, something that um I have concerns with about Washington Village, actually. So um are there, are there actually fifty-six other units available in Nowak right now um for housing people? And if there are, I'd be surprised to hear that, but um if you can elaborate on that. And then finally, the other question too from Mr. Bolvilsky, and I hope you can um speak to this a little bit. In reference to, um, someone was asking about the uh criteria for consideration for a unit in the new development and the um the terminology in good standing. And I recall having gone through this debate with Washington Village. Um, I would say that the in-good standing has to be defined um upfront. And if it's anything that differs from a tenant's current um uh lease agreement, that that would need to be clarified um at the beginning. And that it can't be a moving target, something that we think we experienced with the tenants at Washington Village. Um, that some of the criteria for in-good standing was uh suddenly changing. And um I wanted to ask if someone is not in good standing as these um units start to become available, is there, um, when, when and how is a tenant notified that they are not in good standing? And is there a means through which someone can remedy whatever the violation is to become in good standing um in time to be considered for a unit? And I think that was all four of them, and I thank you very much if you can answer.
Thank you.
Um, good to hear from you again, Diane, uh as well.
Adam? Let's, let's see if there are uh other speakers. And hold, if you would, hold your powder until uh we've heard from everyone. Thank you. Uh, Steve, do we have anyone else?
Yep, uh, Michelle's handling the controls, but yeah, we do have another person.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, it's Nicole Edie, um, at Eight Northern Place. And I just really pretty much just wanted to make a comment. Good to see everybody. Um, I appreciate the work that's being done for Meadow Gardens, and I just wanted to say that I was raised in Meadow Gardens since I was six months old by my grandparents. Um, so this kind of is like surreal. It's kind of sad to see the building go down, but it's good what they're doing. I think they're hitting all the bells and whistles that I've lately been hearing that the commission, you know, requires and would like to see more of. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, and I just appreciate everything that I'm hearing tonight. I'm glad that it is not becoming like Washington Village, you know, mixed-use. Um, and I just wanted to um ask, I know there's a learning center as well, but I wanted to ask if there are courses or classes that can be given to those who do live there for their future, to learn about saving money, to learn about getting prepared to purchase. You know, those are things that needs need to be learned. Um, my family, my aunts and uncles grew up there, but we all had opportunities to move on. So this is like a stepping stone, and it's temporary. It doesn't have to be permanent. Um, but you have to learn how to manage your money and how 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 the system works so that you can move forward, and the next person that needs to go into these types of housing can, but we continue to grow in Nowak. So that's the only question. That's the only comments that I had, and um, the only questions that I had, and I mentioned this to Adam not too long ago, that I kind of want to walk through that building one last time before it goes down, because it's very nostalgic for me. But anyway, thank you so much. That's.
Thank you.
Uh, again, if anybody wishes to speak, the raise-your-hand function is at the bottom, towards the right of your screen. See anyone, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, uh, then we will uh close uh the uh public comment uh portion of uh the hearing. And I will um turn it back to uh Attorney Suchi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, though, that uh Mr. Bolvilsky would be able to respond to Ms. Cece's questions and comments. So I would ask that you indulge him, give him the opportunity to do so before we wrap up our presentation tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, so the 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 first question, um, uh, as I understand it, that Diane asked, uh, was it regarding the the number of one beds? Um, I do believe that when we did the survey, we only found, uh, uh, I think it's one family. It was only a one-person family requiring a one-bedroom. Um, uh, uh, we, the, in order to increase the number of units, uh, it's, of course, easier to increase the number of one-bedrooms, and when we looked at our internal lists of and in terms, looked at the need, although there's needs in all-bedroom types, in addition to the four-bedrooms, we thought the one-bedrooms was something that the Housing Authority in family developments doesn't have enough of, and so that was why we increased um the one-bedrooms. But I will remind folks that every family has the right to return. Um, uh, the right sizing was her second question. Um, we do, we we are always looking to right-size families. Um, there are certain rules and regulations, both from HUD as well as from our own agency about right sizing. Generally, we try to do it within the same development. Um, uh, uh, because families often don't want to be displaced. Their kids may be in school. Um, and in a development like Meadow Gardens where we are now, um, since they were all three-bedrooms, there was no way to right-size families within the development. Um, so it could be disruptive to families to take them out of Meadow Gardens. Um, and a lot of the families, um, even just prefer to stay a little over or a little underhoused, um, where they, where they were. Um, uh, but right sizing is something that we were looking to do before, um, long before we we started working on this redevelopment project. Um, uh Diane also asked about the current market and how we're going to get fifty-four families moved. Um, uh, uh um, and and the answer to that question, first and foremost, is that's why we have a full year that we've dedicated to moving the families. You're correct. There's no way we'd be able to move fifty-four families in a few months. Um, the market would not be able to absorb that number of transfers. Um, uh, and that's why we've uh, we've calendared for an entire year as part of this process. Um, so we're basically doing it in waves. Um, we've hired a relocation consultant um who is helping our families find locations. Um, we have talked to the families in advance of this process about credit and credit repair to try to help them find units in the in the market by becoming um uh more ready and more rent uh friend landlord-friendly. Um, uh, about eight months ago, the Housing Authority, as part of its commitment to mobility, hired a mobility counselor, a full-time mobility counselor who works with all of our Section Eight families, but now is focusing also on Meadow Gardens uh to help families find um not just apartments, but apartments that really meet their whole family needs. And when families are willing uh to look as as much as possible at higher-opportunity neighborhoods uh as as well. So uh, the, for families that are simply unable to move, um, we 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 know there are families that have either terrible credit or no credit um or for other reasons. Uh, they may, themselves may feel like they don't want to move into private housing, um, and those families um are given And those families are given spots in public housing and other developments. We have specifically been holding units of all sizes. In order to make sure that everyone. When the music stops, that everyone gets a chair. So a bunch of the a few of the families that have moved early. At their own who sort of volunteered to go early because they wanted this process to be resolved. Many of them moved internally to public housing again by choice. They they preferred to to stick with the landlord they they know, so to speak. So we are expecting the process to take a year. We think that most of the families that are eligible. That that feel that they themselves are eligible will likely find a place. But in the again, in the worst case scenario, there are some families that may. In the end, find the need to move internally. Because landlords won't won't accept them for for a variety of reasons. There was a question about the moving target of CNI. I don't think there was ever a moving target at the Choice Neighbors Initiative Program as far as who was eligible and who was not eligible. I think there were some general statements like we're making here today that, you know, everyone has a right to return. But there's always a fine print, and there were, I think, three families. That were over income at CNI. That because the new development was a tax credit. Project as this one is. There are federal guidelines and federal restrictions on income. So there were some families making six figures that that. My opinion should probably never have been should not have been in public housing already. Should have moved on, but they were all accommodated, I believe, in in a very good fashion. One family was able to use their relocation funding to buy a home. And their voucher towards that homeownership. And another family which had adult children, we had to split the family up. But that was a voluntary decision on their part. And but by taking the the adult children out of the. Out of the equation and giving them their own units. We were they all income qualified for the development. So in in the end, every family was accommodated as far as those that were over income. And then there are some families that, you know, are way behind in rents. Or who, you know, may have made some sort of other violation, committed fraud on the federal government by. Not claiming their income or. You know, having un unauthorized occupants in the house and the unit. That those types of violations can lead to families being evicted. It has nothing to do with whether or not they are. Part of a relocation. Those are families that can be subject to eviction. Anyways, and if they're subject to an eviction like that, then they are. They could be found to 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 not have a right to return. But again, that's exceptionally exceptionally rare. I do think. There are a couple of families in Meadow Gardens who are already what we refer to as in in a legal process. But again, that that they would be in that legal process, whether or not they're getting to be relocated or whether or not we were going to be redeveloping the the property. So the. The definitions of who's not in good standing is is all set. It's set by our board. Public meetings on all of our policies. And again, I don't believe there was ever really a moving target, although I do think there was some misunderstanding as to. What in good standing meant. And finally, there's always an appeal process. The Housing Authority has internal appeals. Up the chain of command, usually to the Director of Housing Operations, and then after that to the Deputy Director, and then after that to me, the Director. And there's a lot of tenant advocates out there who help these families when they request it. And of course, in some cases, the final arbiter is a is a judge, but there is an appeal process. That we we take very seriously. I think that answered Diane's questions. I'm going to move on to Nicole's. Nicole. So the Housing Authority has an Envision Center in Soundview Landing. We have four full time case managers whose job it is to help families. To support families, but predominantly work with trying to help families pull themselves out of poverty. And they do all kinds of economic assistance, whether it's. Simple things like. Learning how to manage a budget more more efficiently or helping families improve their. Their their income by working on resumes, working on getting. GEDs or going to college. Housing Authority has fifty three students currently in college that were that we fought through our own housing foundation. We gave out over three hundred thousand dollars this past year. To these fifty three fam students to to go to college. So we do a lot of work around the economic development of our of our families and trying to help them pull themselves out of poverty. There is a. There is an outstanding question, I will say that. Because the these families aren't going to be in public housing. Because it's a low income housing tax credit development. We we may need to serve them with. Different resources than we serve our public housing families because they may not qualify for the traditional HUD programs called FSS, Family Self Sufficiency, or Ross. But we do have one of our four full time counselors is not funded by either of those programs and can work with families that are. Not in public housing or section. So we have a means to help them with that, and we hope to continue to do so. It's always been the Housing Authority's mission, part of their mission to not just house families, but to help them. Help themselves out of out of poverty, and that's why. We have the learning centers. That's why we have our foundation. That's why we have the Envision Center. So. We do try to do that work, and I believe we do it very well. There's always more work to be done and more partnerships with the great agencies in Norwalk. That are doing that work outside of the the Housing Authority as well.
Okay, Liz. You want to wrap it up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the hour and the fact that you have some hearings beyond us. There is, we don't have any else, anything else to present to you. I would just ask the Commission to take into consideration the standards of review for a special permit for coastal area management. We've articulated those standards and how we comply with them in our application. And those range from the density and bulk of buildings, stable traffic flow, availability of mass transit. Compatibility of utilities, adverse impact from noise, signage, adequacy of open open space and yards. Impact on neighborhood properties, existing land use in the area, compliance with the plan of conservation development. Conservation of wetlands and no zoning violations on a site. I won't go through all of them, but we do meet or exceed those standards of review. If you have taken the opportunity to take a look at the application, those are articulated specifically in the application. We thank you very much for all of your time tonight, for your questions. We hope that you can move this matter forward and act upon these applications this evening. But should you have any final questions for me or for any any member of the development team, Mr. Bevilski or from Miss Endo, we're certainly happy to answer them. Otherwise, that concludes our presentation. We look forward to your deliberation and action.
Thank you. Are there any final questions for? Please go ahead, Chapin.
This this is actually directed towards staff. I see in the memo, there was a couple items identified in staff comments. I believe all of them have been addressed, but I just wanted to see if staff had anything that was outstanding.
Yeah, everything was addressed. Per the the zoning end of it. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, if not, we'll close the hearing and. Move on to action. I believe we have a resolution on this. Michelle, can you put that up for us, please?
Can you see it?
Yes, can you make it just a tad larger?
Sure.
That's perfect.
Could we add our usual, since I've mentioned this a few times, solar language in here?
Sure. I'll just note I crossed off what's highlighted in regards to at the time. We are unsure of the compliance of how they're addressing it. We assumed that the Housing Authority, all the units are going to be affordable. But um, since they addressed it, we no longer need since they're all the units are going to be eighty percent, so.
And all the units are going to be deed restricted? Is that they're deed restricted at that level?
Yeah, the per the zoning, it will be. The ten percent that we require to be deed restricted, but how they'll do it on their end to pretty much. Their affordable units. Are going to be governed underneath the Housing Authority. We won't have them in the workforce housing like inventory.
Gotcha. And there's nothing that. This could prevent them from. They're not going to flip it in any which way that would make them no longer affordable housing. That wouldn't be legal. Is that right?
Right, and I did. Add the section of the workforce housing. So this development, so say it changes hands at some point, the workforce housing regulations. Apply to this property and would have to comply. As long as the development is in existence.
Okay, Michelle, you'll you'll be adding the. Typical language regarding. Rooftop solar. Let's also put in. Language about all CAC. Requirements. Or did I miss that?
I know it's usually in our. I say number two, all department sign offs are obtained prior to. Does that mean what you're you're suggesting, or should we do it more specific?
No, I think that's that's adequate. Any any other changes that any of the commission members would like to see? All right, if not, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, Mike, are you approving?
Well, JJ had her hand. Let JJ make the motion to approve.
Okay, JJ?
Motion to approve.
Since it's her neighbor, right?
Mike, are you seconding?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Mike is seconding. Are there any further questions?
I have a comment to make.
Sure, go ahead.
I I've said this before, but I think that. Any housing. Is going to affect. People's emotions and how they feel about where they live, and the more attractive the housing. The more proud they will be to come home, and there's plenty of studies that support that. You know, people that live in ugly buildings. Generally are less happy and. And this is across the board, all income levels, but especially in affordable housing. I applaud. The Housing Authority for creating a very attractive. Alternative to what those buildings look like now, you know, which are very kind of impersonal and almost like where, you know. I mean, I like modern architecture, but I wouldn't call those examples of the current Meadow Gardens as, you know, great modern architecture by any stretch. It's like where they're more likely. It's like warehousing. So I love the 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 typology of the architecture, the the peaked roofs that pick up the rhythm of the street. Lots of great thinking, lots of great architecture here. And and landscape architecture as well. So I'm definitely going to support this strongly and would hope all the other commissioners would as well.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments before we go to a vote? All right, if not, let's do a roll call on this. It'd be a. A vote in favor of approving the application.
And everyone seated, Lou, right?
Everyone is seated, yes.
All right, I'll start at the bottom here. Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
As well.
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Which she could have done more, but yes.
Mr. Mucak?
Yes.
Mr. Patches? Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes. Okay, it's approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, everyone, for all of your your help tonight.
Thank you all. Okay, the next item on our agenda is twenty twenty three dash fifty nine SP. The Winston Preparatory School, fifty seven West Rocks Road, District Five. Block twenty one lot one seventy five. Proposed two. Detached modular classrooms, twenty by thirty two feet on existing campus. And who is going to make the presentation? Okay, Mr. Hines?
Yep, good evening. For the record, Vincent Hines, Licensed Engineer with Redness and Mead. Having offices in Stanford and Wilton. Our office has provided the engineering, surveying, and planning services for Winston Preparatory School. And tonight I am joined by the head of school, Stephanie Zabar. We are happy to be before you tonight as the school is seeking approval for construction of two modular classrooms. To be built adjacent to their existing school facility at fifty seven West Rocks Road. For the record, notice of the public hearing was sent out on the October eighteenth via certified mail return receipt. And legal notice was published on October eighteenth and twenty fifth. So I'd like to start by sharing my screen with a general aerial. View. And I'll see that now?
Yes.
The the site lies in the A residence zone on West Rocks Road, the being on the west side of West Rocks Road. And is approximately thirteen point two acres in in size. Winston Preparatory School owns and maintains the site as it currently sits. They provide a private coeducational school setting for students with learning disabilities and utilize a small. Small class size approach. Realizing that that's the most effective for their students. Formerly, the school was included in two special permit approvals for this site. The original approval being in two thousand and seven, which included three separate users. All of school type use, but it was Winston Prep, which had. Included a hundred and fifty students. Cloverhill School, which would have been between one hundred and sixty and two hundred students. And Tudor Time, which would have been. One hundred children for daycare user. Ultimately, Cloverhill and Tudor Time uses never materialized. And Winston Preparatory School purchased the site. And a new approval was granted in two thousand and eleven for their. Current school facility to be constructed. Which sits here kind of at the northwest corner of the site. The approval maintained their original student count of a hundred and fifty students. As that was their expected goal. With that said. They have been operating at a student count of one hundred and thirty. But do you have a current demand trend that indicates they they can reach and serve up to one hundred and fifty students? Which they were originally approved for. And as such, they they need additional classroom facilities to main their to maintain their small class sizes. So that's where the two modular classrooms come into play here at the. Adjacent to the existing school facility in the northwest corner of the site. So this is our our site plan, representing the the details behind those modular classrooms. Like I said, they're adjacent to the existing school facility here. They are connected or will be connected via an ADA accessible walkway. To the main school building there. And each of the modular classrooms will be serviced by the utilities, including. Water, sewer, electric, and telecommunications. Impervious coverage does increase as a as a part of this project. By approximately twenty four hundred square feet. There are existing stormwater infrastructures in place based on the prior approval. Inclusive of if I zoom in here. Uh, inclusive of, if I zoom in here, a constructed wetland pond. Um, there's bio retention squalls and and bio retention basins that were previously installed. Uh, as well as conventional underground infiltration systems. So as part of this project, we are looking to. Uh, expand the underground infiltration system. Uh, which would handle the in- increase in impervious coverage for the walkway. As well as install two. Two unit infiltration systems for each of the modular classroom buildings to be uh conveyed to. Uh. These improvements would allow us to maintain or reduce. Peak rates of runoff and volumes for all storm events up to the hundred year storm. Based on the site design, uh to a- as of today. Uh, the project has received their referral sign offs from D P W. Uh, T M P, the Health Department. And Fire Marshal has indicated they have no comments at this time. Uh, but they would require a full review ahead of their building permit request. Uh, and then in addition to this, we are within a one hundred foot upland review area to. An onsite water course. Uh, as there's a pocket of wetlands and a sliver of water course here on at the north end. Uh, as such, we have submitted and received approval from. Uh, the inland wetlands agency for a minor activity permit. Uh, in closing, uh, we believe that the proposal is in keeping with the original. Approval, as we are not looking to increase above the original approved one hundred and fifty students, we're just looking to. To reach that goal. Uh, and we would ask for your approval towards that. I'd be happy to answer and any questions, or if you have any operational questions, I can get Stephanie to.
Well, these happen as well. These, these um are modular uh classrooms. Um, what used to be referred to, I think, as uh temporary classrooms. And I assume um you're thinking of using these. Um, going going forward indefinitely. I'm wondering why um. You're not uh simply putting up a building. Um, containing two classrooms. Um, rather than uh using this approach.
Hi there, head of school Stephanie Zabar, thank you. Um. That's a great question, and the answer is that right now we are experiencing um in the last four years an increased enrollment. And we want to investigate and see if it's gonna be sustainable. You know, if we find in in three or four years that we're we're able to maintain that number, then we can, the board is is. Interested in and revisiting, you know, the temporary nature of the classrooms and and investing in um possibly more structure. Uh, but at this point, we want to um serve the needs that are here, but we're not sure if it's sustainable yet, so we're we're kind of waiting and seeing.
Thank you. Uh, are there other questions?
I have a couple, oh, sorry, I missed the mute button there. I have a a couple of uh questions. Um, one is the bio retention basin, is that where um like sewer waste is gonna flow from these two modular units? Is that right?
No, so so the bio retention basin is uh here adjacent to the the. Utility access driveway. Uh, and that is a. A a low impact design. Uh, related to stormwater runoff mitigation. Uh, and that was installed with the uh or initial school building construction. Uh, and so that's been maintained and operated since their construction and I I believe. They finished construction in two thousand and twelve or two thousand and thirteen, if I believe.
Okay, um, as another question, um, is there any lighting planned for the uh for the new path? Is any lighting needed?
That's a good question. Uh, I I would assume. This being a a school facility that were less likely to require lights along the path. Uh, because we won't have any necessarily nighttime activity. Um, but we we could look into that if uh if the school would like to add any low profile, maybe a. Either a Ballard style light or 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 something full cut off.
Yeah, just thinking some of our uh winter days, and I can't remember how that may overlap with school hours. It's been a been a moment since I've uh been in school. Um. I think those, oh, last question is, um, are any uh trees being removed as a part of this? It looks like they were in a clearing, but I I had a little trouble telling uh.
No, good question. Uh, currently, the 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 area where the. The buildings are proposed and as well as the walkway. Are uh in lawn and or what I would call more of a overgrown. Uh, lawn area, so no, no trees uh currently in those locations.
Great, thank you for those all my questions.
Okay. Uh, other questions? And if you have them, keep in mind, I may not be able to see you, so I suggest you just speak up. All right, there don't appear to be any uh uh additional questions.
I have one comment, Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
Not really a question, but I I actually was on the zoning commission in two thousand and eleven when this was approved. That's why I'm retiring. Um, one of the reasons, uh, because I've been around so long. Um, but I remember they had a concrete lined pond. That counted, uh, and I, it was just a a comment because it was so unusual. It was this huge pond, but it was all concrete bottom. You know, built in the nineteen twenties or thirties when it was a private estate. Uh, someone, someone's uh, you know, cement pond. And it counted as impervious surface, even though it was a water body. And I just remembered. I'll find, I it does, it seems sort of defies uh reason, but I think the uh Winston Prep's been a great neighbor. And I remember at the time that it was kind of uh innovative, uh, the architecture, and I believe they won an A I A award. Uh, for the building, uh, and if not other uh awards, I believe. For their energy efficiency, so I think they've proven themselves. I think this is a smart move for the school to see if. Their growth is sustainable, and they may come back to us in a few years. When I'm not on the commission any longer and uh and ask for a permanent building, but they've been. The the kind of good neighbor that, you know, adds to uh the. The sort of opportunity, educational opportunities. Uh, that make our community stronger, so uh I I. Which is certainly gonna prove this. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, any other questions?
Um, just just as a comment, uh, from a practical standpoint, please. Uh, I've seen these modular modular classrooms, uh, where my son used to go to uh. Our Lady of Fatima, they had the very same setup, uh, two classrooms that. The first year they didn't have that much enrollment, and then the classes grew, uh, they changed sizes. Uh, so from uh a practical standpoint, it definitely makes sense to. To go for the uh for the approval, and as a principal mentioned, um, it's kind of like serves as a as a testing ground and to test the waters of the of the enrollment.
Thank you, Hechner.
Since I have to add this, since you brought that up, the Lady of Fatima, Hector. The uh school academy that was denied in Norwalk for the Dolce Center. Uh, as we, as you recall, um, they publicly thanked. Norwalk for the denial because they're now at the Lady of Fatima. In Wilton, and they think that's a better location for them, but they, but the owner. In in a newspaper article said, I really appreciate the fact that Norwalk denied us because we found a better facility. So I just thought I'd put that on the record. Uh, that was pretty. A a a pretty uh amazing outcome, uh, and they did appeal, and they lost the appeal. Uh, but uh they ended up at Our Lady of Fatima, which is uh because that school actually closed. That uh former Catholic school, so I don't think they've opened yet, but they're they're gonna be at that location up in Wilton. And we're not gonna, we'll have four hundred less cars in uh twice a day in we- in West Norwalk as a result. Thank goodness, thank you.
Uh, any, any uh other uh questions for the applicant? If not, uh, we'll open it up to the public and I will. Uh, explain again, uh, that um we don't limit uh how long you speak. Um, but you only have one opportunity, so we ask that uh. You make sure that uh as you speak, you're asking all the questions. Uh, that are important to you. Um, at the same time, we we ask that. In fairness to everyone involved, you try and keep your comments as brief as possible. Um, we also ask that uh you uh provide us with your name and uh with your. Address. And uh with that, we will open it up to the public. Um, Steve, do you want to explain how they can? Ask to speak?
Sure, uh, again, it uh at the bottom of your screen, there's a raise your hand, a little icon, you can click on that and then we will unmute you. Uh, no one is stopped by phones, so that's the only uh potential. And again, raise your hand button is at the bottom of the screen. Here's no takers, Mister Chin.
Okay, uh, obviously, this is not a particularly controversial uh item. Um. Uh, once again, anyone uh wishing uh to speak, uh, use the raise your hand uh button at the bottom. Uh, sort of the right-hand uh side uh of the screen. Um. Seeing no one, we will close the public participation. Uh, portion of the public hearing, and uh I will turn it back to Mister Hines.
Yep, thank you. Uh, I I think uh just in closing, uh, as Stephanie indicated. Uh, if if the enrollment goes well and and is sustainable, I I think we'd be before you again, uh, assuming. All goes well, uh, and uh. We hope that that's the case, quite honestly, because the 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 enrollment's the important important part to it. Reach as many of the students as we can.
Okay. Thank you, um. Um, I will uh then close uh the public hearing and uh we'll move on to action. Um. Um. Either um Steve or Michelle. Um, can you? Put it up for us, please? There we go. That's perfect. Uh, is there a uh motion uh to approve the resolution?
This is Chapin, I move to approve.
Okay, uh Chapin moves to approve. Is there a second? Uh, Hector has uh seconded. Um, so we have motion, we have a second. Um, again, let's do a roll call on this. We're voting on uh approving the resolution. Um, to uh approve the request. Um, for um. Uh, fifty-seven West Rocks Road, Winston Prepar- Preparatory School, the proposed detached. Two modular classrooms.
Alrighty, um, Miss Jordan Byron? Yes. Mister Cantor?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Miss Wells?
Yes.
Miss Langgallis?
Yes.
Mister Muzak?
Yes.
Mister Patches? And Mister Bryce?
Yes.
Mister Schuman?
Yes. Um. So uh, the uh motion is uh approved. Uh, unanimously, uh, best of luck to you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Um, uh, it's eight oh nine, I uh expect we will. Finish this third public hearing before nine o'clock, uh, but if we have not, uh, and in any case. We'll be taking a ten-minute break at nine o'clock. Um, we'll come back together at uh nine, ten. Should this uh uh take less time, we'll take our break when we finish this public hearing. Um. This is twenty twenty-three dash forty uh R slash M. Peter and Lisa Lane, Three River Road. One to amend the building zone regulation, Article fifty, section one eighteen dash five thirty-one. Uh, and River Road two expansion of the Silvermine Tavern Village District. To include Three River Road, District Five Block. Forty-four Lot Two, Five River Road, District Five Block forty-four, Lot eleven. Six River Road, District Five Block thirty-nine, Lot twenty-nine. And River Road, District Five Block. Uh. District Five Block, pardon me, thirty-nine Lot. Uh, twelve A and a portion of one oh three two Silvermine Avenue. District Five Block forty-four, Lot number seven. Um. And uh, who is representing the applicant?
Good evening. Chair Schuman, this is Andy Sumalides.
Oh, okay.
Um, this is Andy Sumalides from LanTech, we're professional engineer and principal with offices at a Westport. Um, also with me tonight is Anna Risinga from our office. As well as Todd Bryant, um, who's an architectural historian on preservation consultant. As well as the applicant, uh, Mister Peter Lane. So you'll hear a little bit from everybody as we go through this presentation. What's before you tonight is really just a text and map amendment, not a special permit for a. Proposed development, so I just want to make that clear as you guys hear this presentation through what. What's really before you, if this does get. Approved, that we would come back for a special permit, and we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Um, the proper notices were sent out to the abutting neighbors and across the street, uh, green cards were submitted as necessary. Just want to make that part of the record. Um, and I'll just show you, I'm gonna start sharing my screen. Where we started with the, with how we got here, um. And I'll start off with the map amendment. So here, as you can see, this is the whole city, Norwalk as a whole, um, the zoning map. We're focused in this upper left-hand corner, northwest corner here. Um, which is the Silvermine Village Tavern District. Um, in the red outline here is the current district, and you'll see more of that. And what we're looking to do is expand that village district. Um, to the north, to some residential properties that are currently zoned Residence A. So we're looking to convert Residence A to the S T B D, um, Silvermine Tavern Village District. Um, LanTech was involved with the. Silvermine Tavern Village District rewriting zone back in twenty fourteen. Um, LanTech with Mister Glazer came up with a text amendment. To enhance and preserve historic structures um that were formerly the inn and tavern. So I'm just gonna walk you through, an outline blue here is what's currently the Silverman Tavern Village District, and I'm just gonna go through some of these. Current um uses and current location of structures um on the Silvermine Tavern. And then go through a little bit about how that tavern rewrite was done back in twenty fourteen. So here at one ninety-two Perry Ave, you have an existing single-family residence that was rehabbed. With an existing guest house. Next door to that, at one ninety-four Perry Ave, you have what was restored now as the Hotel or Inn. As well as the Gray Barnes Tavern slash Restaurant. Across the street here on the corner at 193 Perry Ave was the Mercantile or Commercial Store, as it was referred to. And here previously was a vacant parking lot with an old barn on it that sat right about here. As part of the redevelopment, there was a new barn structure that was placed near the road, as well as a commercial parking lot. And in the rear here, which is the impetus of our expansion, is the four-unit cluster housing development. When this zone was created back in 2014, I mean, the zone was actually created in 2008. And from 2008 to 2014, nothing was done with that new Silver Mine Tavern Village District. It just didn't allow for what needed to be done. So other uses were looked at. I think a convention center was actually looked at on this piece of property. The inn and restaurant were in disrepair. And what happened was, we rewrote that text amendment to allow for these four single-family residents, the economics then to be put into rehabbing and restoring the inn and restaurant, as well as the store. So that was kind of in a nutshell, what happened and how we got to this and how it's been successful. I'm not sure if you guys had an opportunity to go up there, but it's an awesome site, great restaurant, and a great amenity in Silver Mine. What we're looking to do in yellow here are the properties that we'd like to convert from Residence A to that Silver Mine Village District. Right here is Three River Road, which contains an existing single-family residence, historic, and you'll hear about that later, more from Todd, a detached garage, a pool. And on Five River Road, you'll see there's a single-family cottage. Again, historic, and you'll hear more about that, and I won't bore you with it. The rear property of the market here is what we're looking to also encompass into the, into the district. The front portion here, you can see here in black, is actually a portion in New Canaan. There's a town line that runs where my cursor is here. So we're looking just to include the portion of Norwalk, which is basically vacant land into the district. There's an old historic barn and connectivity from the art guild here, the market here, these commercial elements, and kind of creating this connectivity to the other commercial portion of the Silver Mine District. There's another 0.77 acres of land on the riverfront here that you'll see later, we're looking to preserve and put into open space as part of our proposal. And actually, that's how the, the current text was actually written. So you'll see here, as part of our proposal, what we're looking to do here now, this is zooming in on our proposal. We're looking to expand really that cluster housing portion. The rest of the Silver Mine Tavern Village District text really pertains to the commercial aspect of it. This portion that we're looking to expand is really that cluster housing. And what you'll see here is, we're looking to preserve the existing residence barn structure, and even the pool, and really preserve this. And what would be a catalyst for that would be like something that could come up at the special permit stage, is to really de-restrict it and to preserve these historic structures. You see here, a new residence proposed here up front. Here is that cottage with a small addition to it. Here's also a new residence, new residence, and new residence. So what you see here is preservation of two historic residents and the addition of four new single-family dwelling units. This would have to be in a condo-type association, so you're not looking at a subdivision. You're looking at what you currently have in your regs, which is classified as a conservation development, where you basically have condo lines, it's and basically maintaining an association-type format. And that's exactly what you have next door here with these components. These are all been sold off, and they're all in single ownership under a condominium-type association. Along the open space front edge here, what we're looking to do is really enhance and preserve that area. There'll be obviously no clearcutting, that would never be allowed, but there is some invasive species here. We would look to possibly do some removal of those invasive species, replant with some more native. What you see here in gray are some existing walkways that kind of get you down to the waterfront. But what we're really looking to do is really preserve this area, in a nutshell. That's, that's exactly what we're looking to do with that area. What I'd like to show you here is what's really allowed under this current zone and the current properties. What we could do here is an as-of-right three-lot subdivision. And you'll see in the, in the next PDF presentation of the comparison of the Silver Mine Village District to the current Residence A Zone. And you could see the massing of these residences, right? You're allowed 25% coverage. You can put pools. So right, what you see here is, I mean theoretically, you could basically build a 20,000-square-foot single-family residence on each one of these lots with a basement and two and a half stories above it. Would somebody build that? Probably not, but they'd certainly build an 8,000-square-foot house probably here in Silver Mine, because it warrants it, and the economics work to, you know, probably produce a $3 million house. A $3 million house was just sold not too long ago, right here across the river. So this is what you could do as a right. Here's just one stab at cutting up the lots into three different lots. But you know, you can cut this up many different ways. You can get two homes up front and one just in the back. So this is just conceptual, what you could do here. What you could also do, which isn't shown here, are three single-family residences with three accessory dwelling units. So you could theoretically have six units of, of, you know, of housing with on this, on this parcel. And that's what we're really looking to do with a more friendly, I would say, cluster housing development and more thoughtful cluster housing development. You could see here, as part of this development, we can't retain those existing single-family historic structures. Those historic structures will not be preserved. We could file a demo permit tomorrow and remove those structures and, and move forward with a three-lot subdivision. So you'll see, as you hear more through this presentation, what we're looking to do here, what we're looking to do here is preserve historic structures, is to preserve and enhance open space. We're looking to promote smaller cottage-type style housing, which is more diverse housing for the empty nesters and the senior citizens of the city of Norwalk. And we're also looking to improve the public realm within village districts. These are all elements within your 2019 P O C D and are encouraged as part of this. It's encouraging an expansion of village districts, as well as all those other elements I just mentioned. Again, this is just a text and map amendment to allow the catalyst to come in with a special permit. If, if this were to be approved, you'll see some of the restrictions right now. We're not, we're looking actually to preserve historic structures and do a more thoughtful development, because a three-lot subdivision just doesn't allow for that. And what you could see here is, this is what we're looking to do now for the single, you know, the Silver Mine Tavern Village District regulations. And this is your Residence A Zone and the comparison of it. And I'm just going to point to two major factors. Under the building area, which you saw, you could do 25% coverage, building coverage, on a three-lot subdivision. Because the Silver Mine Tavern Village District, in the current regulations, cluster housing is limited to 4,400 square feet of gross floor area. Of that, 1,150 square feet of it needs to be in the basement, a minimum of that. So what you're looking at is a potential plus or minus 15%, when you're doing these cluster housing developments. So you're looking at a 10% decrease in building coverage by adopting this Silver Mine Tavern Village District. And also, what you're getting is less massing. In Residence A, you're allowed two and a half stories and 40 feet to the peak of a structure. This would limit you to one and a half stories and 30 feet to the peak. So you're looking at smaller scale, more in kind with historic structures and Silver Mine as, you know, as, as a historic center. And you're really kind of limiting some development, and it becomes a more thoughtful process of developing a more meaningful site plan. You'll hear more of that from Todd and Peter as we come through. So what we're looking to do in order for this to happen is a slight modification to, to the current text. I'm more than happy to go through the existing text a little bit. That key is that 4,400 gross floor area of these structures, that's the max you can get. That existing residence that is at Three River Road is the max, is basically maxed out. So that has 4,200 square feet, and 1,160 square feet of that is in a basement. So looking at that, that's the scale you're looking at of what, what, what fits, right? What really fits in Silver Mine, rather than, you know, these McMansions that are going up. So what we would need is a slight modification to that text. And what we did add was a density number to that also, right? So we capped the maximum cluster housing at four. So the max you could do, no matter what, is four, right? So some of the concern was, well, where else is this going to happen in Silver Mine? And who else is going to be able to do this? Well, we capped the acreage at two acres, right? So there's no two acres within a quarter mile that qualify to even be in this. There would have to be another, wouldn't it just be a map amendment? You'd have to adopt another text amendment, plus a map amendment, to be able to expand, expand this village district. We also added another method of protection, which is, it needs to be directly adjacent across the street from the tavern property. Right? So we're one of the only, we're probably the only property that is adjacent to it. So we really hindered this. We heard from some of the neighbors and their concern about they, they were positive about our proposal, but they're a little bit concerned about, well, who else can do this and where else can this go? Well, one, they'd have to come in with a map amendment, like we are. And it'd also have to come in with a text amendment to make sure they fit the criteria. And there is no properties within a quarter mile that fit that criteria currently today. You'd have to acquire multiple pieces of land in same ownership and have historic structures to be preserved in order to even, you know, qualify and meet the necessary, and that'll also be adjacent. So what we're looking to do here is, we added that one new dwelling for 30,000 square feet. So what we looked at was next door, what we did at Gray Barnes, and figuring out the landmass there, which was about three acres. And if you take that three acres and divide it 30,000 square feet into it, you're allowed four residences. And if you take our conglomerate of 2.91 acres, we're just shy of that three acres. So that's why we're changing the three to two, you get four units. So let's say, for instance, a piece of property wasn't included, then you would get to a different acreage. But we felt like we needed an added density component to it to figure out exactly how you came up with the fourth cluster house. Also, throughout the area, there's a lot of one-third acres that directly abut us and are directly in that Silver Mine Perry Ave district area. So that's how we came up with, with the text. I also want to point out, what the current text does require is, if you do guys adopt this, there is a strenuous special permit process that we would need to go through. The property is serviced by septic, so we'd have to get health approvals, the septic systems. Obviously, we need to meet the city of Norwalk drainage standards, and adhere to their new standards that came out in 2017, I believe, which are fairly stringent and are up to the 100-year storm. We would also have to be under the guise of a third-party architectural architect, historic architect. You guys, as you know, with the East Norwalk Village Districts and these other districts that were newly adopted, the city of Norwalk has, has now required third-party review by a third-party architect. And that special permit process allows for a more stringent review than what a three-lot subdivision would. An as-of-right three-lot subdivision, we can come in there, demo everything, put up whatever type of house, modern, doesn't fit in with the neighborhood, and there's no architectural review board that the city of Norwalk has that would be able to have control over that. So what this does is actually limit the type of development that can go on these properties. And it becomes a more strenuous review process through that special permit process. It becomes a very more thoughtful development. So that's what we're here today to, to try and accomplish. I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Todd Bryant, who could speak a lot more to the historic aspect of these structures and one of the key components of preserving historic structures, which is in your P O C D.
Thanks, Andy. So I'm Todd Bryant. I'm a principal at Heritage Resources, which is a historic preservation consulting firm. I am not speaking, I'm speaking tonight as a paid consultant, not as, not as a representative of any other groups that I'm identified with. So this is a pretty unique application, I believe, where a property owner is seeking to, first of all, preserve two historic buildings on a property. And secondly, make sure that they're preserved by creating a small-scale development based on the village district statute. This is a pretty creative way to, to affect preservation. Now, the, the, the house at Three River Road and the, the Gatesmore House are both listed in the Silver Mine Center National Register Historic District. So both, which doesn't protect them at all. There's the Connecticut Environmental Protection Act is minimal protection, but it's very difficult to make it work. So there really effectively is no protection for these two, for these two buildings. By putting them in a village district, they are, they are protected in a much better way, not to mention the fact that Peter is willing to consider the possibility of either an easement or a deed restriction on both of those buildings. Now, the, the three, Peter's house was built probably in 1843. You have all of the details for this in the, in the history of the houses that was submitted with the original package. So I'm not going to go through the DNA of every house. But the idea of preserving these houses by infill development is pretty interesting. But it's not very different from what happened in Sono, if you think about it. And that clearly has been extremely successful. This is more restrictive, and I believe a better idea than what happened in Sono. And if you start with the plan of conservation and development, the very first item in the historic preservation section, the very first goal is Norwalk protects its most important historic resources and encourages adaptive reuse of historic sites to maintain and enrich the city's character. Nothing could, that basically describes this project. And then, if you move into the village districts, village district, Section 8-2J of the Connecticut General Statutes, paragraph B says, "The regulations establishing a village district shall protect the distinct, the distinctive character, landscape, and historic structure within such districts, and may regulate on and after the effective date of such regulations, new construction, substantial reconstruction, and rehabilitation of properties within such districts and in view of public roadways." Once again, that could, that could essentially describe this project. And Peter's going further in that the new houses that he is proposing to be built there would be based on the designs of Margaret White Smith, whom many of you may know, who was Norwalk's first female architect. She worked very much in the colonial revival style, which certainly would be harmonious with the existing buildings, one of which was built in 1843. And the other one is said to have been built in 1928, but I believe that it was once a barn that had been modified to a, to a residence in 1928. But one way or another, they're both historic buildings, and they're both, they're both listed in the National Register. One second please, I have a very insistent dog here. Sorry, it's just, just one of the joys of doing these Zoom meetings from your home office. So anyway, that's, that's basically the story. I mean, Peter is, is really kind of bending over backwards to make sure these buildings are preserved. He is doing He is, uh, uh, doing, you know, going even further and, uh. Uh, using precedence from Norwalk's history to design the new buildings. He's, and, and he'll talk a little bit more about his, uh, his, uh, uh, working with the land trust. On the, on the parcel, the wooded parcel on the river that will not be built on. So all things considered, I think this is probably one of the best, uh, and most creative, uh, uses of a village district that I've ever seen. And I would urge you to, uh, to approve it. So Andy, back to you. Or to Peter, whoever is going next.
Want me to jump in, Andy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, hi, um, Commissioner, I'm Peter Lane, um, part of Peter and Lisa Lane. Um, we, we've been here in Silvermine now for twenty-five years, uh, with, with two kids. We brought our kids up here. And, you know, we came across this, uh, great historic house, um. And, and purchased it off the Whitmans, um, who owned the Silvermine Tavern. And, uh, and just fell in love with the history, obviously, of Silvermine. My wife and I first found. Silvermine in a small cottage just down the street on Red Barn Lane. And, uh, one of our favorite houses and since we're here and we restored this property. And, and the property next door as well. And, uh, I, I think, uh, as a part of this property, it's got. Uh, a history and a soul, you know, four owners of this property own the Silvermine Tavern. It actually was a part of the tavern properties and we. When we bought it from the Whitman family. And so, you know, it's, it's been our goal to. Try to find a way to obviously maintain it as we've had for fifteen years and anybody owning, owning old homes knows the, what comes with all that. And so when we explored, uh, the idea with planning and zoning back in, boy, it might've even been late summer. Um, with Steve Kleppen about options, we have, uh, the other building lot in the subdivision possibilities. And all the new zoning coming along and we said, well, what's the responsible thing to do for Silvermine, for this property and for these houses? And I think it was a recommendation that the, the village district was a great vehicle. Uh, and, and so we, we started designing to that idea. And, uh, we came up with those plans. And I, I, I think what our approach was, was do what we would want as neighbors is. Is to be reached out to, to, uh, get everybody's input, uh, and I, I would have appreciated the same. Um, and so what we did since the spring is we. Uh, met with the Silvermine Community Association and it was well received. Uh, with a lot of great input and questions. We've also, also spoken with folks from Nash. Uh, and I've personally called and met with and, and or called every neighbor, uh, and a butter. Uh, that I can possibly get a hold of, which were, uh, over a dozen and I walked the property with several. And again, looking for everybody's input, um, because I believe this project represents. You know, truly the history and, and heritage of Silvermine. And, uh, and, and the design of these houses and the structures and the preservation of the old structures i- is the goal and the intent. Uh, and again, um, having reached out with all the neighbors, I, getting a lot of good feedback. Um, and I'm just hopeful that we can, as I said to Frank Whitman, that someday a hundred years from now, our name is on the chain of deeds. Uh, with those before us and after us and that this house should still be here and, uh, and I think that's the goal. Uh, surrounded by some historic infill cluster houses that, uh, are at what I would say is the scale of Silvermine. Uh, and it's probably my favorite part of this project is that Silvermine is in the A-zone. Um, and it's full of historic structures that are smaller, on smaller parcels. You know, uh, all probably around the, the size of these parcels that they leave. And I think that's the idea of this village district is that we are. Building exactly to that scale, which makes Silvermine so unique and brings, and, and gives it all its character. And, and that's the plan is to follow that.
I think we're all set, Chair Shulman.
Okay.
Turn it back over to you guys for any questions before the public. I'm sure there's some folks from the public who like to comment.
Questions from commission members? Or if not.
Well, I do have a question.
Uh, Tammy, you're muted.
My apologies, I was, JJ, go ahead, and I'll go second, thank you.
Yeah, okay, I was just reading through some of the, um, the, the, the questions. To the commissions and one of them was questioning the. I guess the, um, amount of houses that you have and they said that there is, is three point one, not four. They say the math doesn't add up.
Sure, um, I could answer that. I think the math was done just on the parcel, um. Not including the waterfront. So the whole district will be the whole two point nine one acres. So if you take the two point nine one acres and divide it by thirty thousand. It allows for four units. But if you take out the waterfront portion, that's only two point one four acres. And that's where you get the three units.
Ah, hmm.
So what we did was, uh, I'll share my screen again quickly. So if you just take this parcel. This is your two point one four.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you have point seven seven here as well. So that equates to two point nine one total in the new district. And you take that by the thirty thousand square feet, get your four units.
Okay, so are these two part, are this, these two parcels gonna be, uh, joined? In any way, is, are they gonna be connected by a roadway?
No, so that's, that's exactly how this was done. So you see, these were all bisected by roadways.
Yeah.
Excuse me, and the, the, the zone already allows that. So this was done the same way. The, this encompasses three acres.
Yeah.
And if you take the three acres and divide that by thirty thousand, it equates to the four houses also. But if you were to take just this parcel where the houses reside.
Yeah.
You know, even if you took out that commercial portion. This area here. Um, is roughly one point two acres. So you see these four homes here.
Right.
They sit on about one point two acres. And we're looking for six homes here on two point one four acres. So this, if you're looking at a density of what happened next door, you're looking at one unit per about thirteen thousand square feet of lot area. And what we're looking for is one unit per fifteen thousand square feet of lot area. So it's, you know, it's even less dense than what you're looking at next door. But we needed a catalyst to figure out how that density worked. So what happened with the original text was. You're allowed to build four new homes anywhere. There was no restrictions. You needed to have a barn within fifteen feet of a property line. And then that'll allow you to restore these existing historic structures. Um, so that was how it was before. There was no density number associated with how we came up with the four housing units. Um, it was almost like we, we kind of did a schematic site plan to see what would work and what, what felt right, uh, and, and. In kind with the community. Uh, so that's how we did the original text amendment. And what we did here was instead of saying, you know, you could just do. Six units here, um, on this lot, we had to, one, um. Cap it at four new units, right? So that caps it no matter what. And then you, we, we added that density component. So what you see, I think if you guys saw in the, um, in the staff memo. Uh, Mister Kleppin came up with just saying, okay, we can allow eleven homes, right? Uh, and it's. You know, these four existing plus one here is five, and then you do these six and you get to eleven. Right? So, you know, Steve and I actually talked about it earlier today, like, how do you come up with that density piece and what does it look like? We also, you know, and maybe Steve has some comments on that of how, how do you, you know. Is it, is it a map that accompanies the text amendment? Like this map becomes part of that approval? And then we could show that, but the one for thirty thousand works across the board for what's existing and what we're proposing. So that's how we came up with that one for thirty thousand.
Um, Tammy?
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess first my, um, question would be to Mister Similes. Uh, thank you for the presentation. In just looking at the parcel that's on the river, um. Would that actually be allowable to build on regardless? I mean, because it's. You'd have to be so many feet from the water in the flood zone, it's not that wide. Is that really truly a buildable piece?
Uh, most likely not. Uh, but there are some structures that are there on the waterfront. I mean, the one that's currently there at one ninety-two Perry Ave. Obviously that predates, you know, wetlands and all that, but yeah, you'd be hard pressed to probably get a building lot on that. Anyways, right? So, but what we're looking to do is right now, it's, you know, it's a little bit overgrown and what we're looking to do is enhance it. And as part of this proposal, we would be required to do that. Um. We're also talking with the Norwalk Land Trust and, and so on and so forth and seeing how we can actually enhance that property. Right now, it would just stay as is, right? And maybe some of the neighbors aren't objective to that, but we'd like to beautify it a little bit more and, and make it, you know, more environmentally friendly, I'd say. And maybe more pedestrian friendly in that area.
Okay, great. So, um, if your project gets approval. It would be a PUD situation? Or are they, is it going to be a PUD, a Planned Urban Development? How is it going to be owned? Condominium, like condominium style?
Condominium style.
Yep, okay. Um, and, uh, I would just say some perspective that I have. Um, Margaret Hoyt Smith used to live in Rowayton on Highland Avenue, right near the Graham Capital Property. Which became, um, Harbor Bluff and sadly, there was a beautiful house there. I believe it was from the late eighteen hundreds. I might have my numbers off just a little bit. Um, and that property was sold. And it was turned into a PUD and twelve houses went in, uh, packed in. There probably. Should not have even been eight houses in there. And I know that some of the neighbors in the Silvermine area wrote against this. Um, and I, I'm sensitive to that. Um, but, but I wish, um, what you guys are trying to achieve here. Had happened on that parcel on Highland Avenue, twenty-four Highland Avenue, uh, back in the early two thousands. And there's also an example on Rowayton Avenue, a little street called Joe's Barn Way. Where there was an older structure or two and a, a developer came in and created. Historic looking structures with a little meandering street, Joe's Barn Way. That goes through the property from Rowayton Avenue to Milton Place. Um, they are packed in there. But they're very, um, attractive and aesthetically, they were in keeping. With the other older structures on that section of Rowayton Avenue. So while I think. I understand what the neighbors are feeling, that. The bulk and size of these structures that you're trying to keep them down. I think it, it's a good thing, um, and preserving the two existing properties is admirable. And I'm not certain, are you keeping the little barn and does it just become somebody's barn or does it? Is it a separate dwelling stru, a structure?
Which, which barn is that?
Isn't there a barn with one of the existing houses?
Oh, it's a detached garage.
Okay, sorry, I call it, it's old, it should be called a barn, right? Like what Mister Lane, like he's sitting in.
That's a mermaid.
And Tammy, thanks, by the way, um. I actually, my daughter and I, and she wants to be an architect one day possibly. We went down to the Norwalk Historical Society and we went to the exhibit for Margaret Hoyt Smith. And learned about her and this was years ago when they first opened. I since was able to track down Margaret's daughter, Jane Pataki, who lives in Rowayton still. And with, uh, with tears in her eyes, she gave me a couple boxes of her mom's work. And we, we unpacked them and that's the inspiration for some of the designs that you've seen on, on some of the links. Where we're gonna follow, uh, her mother's lead on the design of these cottages because she actually did. Um, the additions in nineteen sixty to the house when the Whitmans owned it. And, uh, which is Three River Road. So Three River Road has these beautiful additions that are low profile at scale. And, uh, and, and, and as you said, she's done a bunch in, uh, Rowayton as well. And so we'll follow her lead here with these cottages and, and Jane was so great to be able to pass over some of her files and her work. I mean, literally down to mantles and railings and shutters, it was great stuff, so. Uh, and some I have to return to her as well and some may end up in the museum, but, uh, thanks for, for talking about her.
You're welcome.
Joe's Barn Way was actually, uh, one of the inspirations, I'd say, for Gray Barnes. Uh, Mister Glazer was a native of Rowayton, lived right there. Um, was one of the ideas and, and concepts of how we created these, you know, cluster houses next door at Gray Barnes.
Uh, Nick?
I, I'm sorry, but. Uh, just, I knew both of those developments and fought very, very. Hard, but, uh, without result to save that house that we talked about, the Victorian nineteenth century house that, uh, was subsumed by development. Uh, Joe's Barn Way, both of these, while they're interesting to talk about. What, you know, this, this, the Gatesmore project, which is what we're calling it. Is vastly different than that. It's much more sensitive to the environment and it's much more sensitive architecturally to what's going on there.
Thank you. That's what I was, um, trying to recognize and, but still be sensitive to how the neighbors feel up there.
Go ahead, Neil.
My question was, eh, from what you submitted, it sounds, it seems like there's no other parcels in, in Silvermine where this would be applicable to. Is that, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. Somebody would have to, you know. Uh, combine a bunch of parcels, be adjacent to the tavern and it just, you, you'd have to do another text amendment. Um, and map amendment in order for this to expand. Correct. Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, any other questions? All right, if not, uh, with apologies to the public, uh, those who are standing by to speak. We're gonna take a ten minute break. Um, we'll get back together at nine oh one and then we will, uh, open this up to the public. Okay, uh, it's nine oh one. Uh, we're going to um. Restart the public hearing. And by uh opening it up to the public. Uh, for those of you who haven't been here for the earlier hearings, uh, I'll briefly uh explain how this works. Uh, on a Zoom meeting, um. You'll you'll need to raise your hand to be recognized uh so that uh you can speak. Um, you have one opportunity to speak. We don't limit. Uh, for how long you can uh speak. Uh, we just ask that um you keep your comments as brief as possible. While making sure you cover all of the uh uh information that's important to you. Uh, please give us your name and uh your address. And um. Um, we simply uh ask that you speak in a a courteous uh manner. Um, this is not a uh discussion back and forth uh with the applicant. Uh, you will, you can ask uh uh any questions uh you wish, make any statements you wish. Uh, after everyone who wishes to speak has spoken. Um, the uh applicant uh is then given an opportunity to respond. Uh, to what's been said by the public. And uh, the commission members will uh once again have an opportunity to uh ask questions. Uh, when that is uh completed, uh, we will close the hearing and um. Uh, move on to action. Um, Steve, would you like to explain how uh the uh public can um access the meeting?
Certainly, we do have uh two individuals with their hands raised already, but if you wish to speak. Uh, stated previously, you can use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Uh, and we will unmute unmute you once we bring you over. First up is uh Andy Glazer.
Uh, thanks, Steve. Uh, my name is Andy Glazer. Uh, I and my family own um one ninety-two, one ninety-three, one ninety-four. Uh, Perry Avenue and One River Road, um, which abuts the uh, the uh. Discussed property. Um, first, Andy, thanks for the presentation. It was succinct. And obviously understood, um. Andy worked with uh me um and uh Mike Green and then Dory Wilson on the Silver Mine Village District to. Make it a vehicle that would help to preserve the tavern. Um, the problem with the initial SBD is it really had, other than just. To preserve and allow certain uses, you know, did not create an economic ability to to raise the money to do it. Um, when we came in, we said this open field, we'd like to build houses there and use the profits from the houses to um. Go and pay for the renovation, the extensive renovations of the property. Um, it worked out well. The renovations have have done well. The property is a well-known property at this point has helped to uh. Renovate the Silver Mine community. The difference here was the houses provided the means to save the tavern. With all due respect to this application, there's not the same. Motivation in terms of what exactly the goal is. I understand that the. Pitch is that, well, we're gonna save the historic houses. The house, Todd knows this, a house of that nature that Pete lives in is is a classic historic house. Of a level that has not been altered in any manner that would uh make it possible. Um, and the the attorney general would file an injunction. There's no way that house would get torn down. Todd may nod his head, but that's, he knows very well that this kind of house would not be uh, you know. That would not be something that would happen. It would be tied up and tied up and tied up and should not be toned down. And should be deed restricted because it is a classic house. Um. The design of Margaret. I'm sorry, what was her name? Is is interesting. There's, of course, once the subdivision is through, there's no guarantee of what's gonna get built there. The, I'm not sure, Andy, maybe you can answer that question uh uh at the end of this. Is there a limitation on size? I understand that the. Stick is that, well, without this cluster, we can build three big houses on three lots. First of all, operating and zoning's dealt this with. Dealt with this before, operating at the point of a gun relative to, well, this is the worst thing that could happen, so. Approve our nicer, smaller thing. It's not a terribly great way to do zoning. This is a down zoning anyway you look at it. Um, and the underlying acreage is a one acre zone. They're right, obviously, that in Silver Mine, there's not uh other parcels of two acres in size really that could do this, but obviously in town there are. And so that is uh something that the commission has to uh take into uh consideration. The riverside is not buildable. It's it's simply not buildable. So there's no point even discussing that. It's it's it's. Twenty feet wide and it's it's not, the house that I live in, which is the old Mill House, is a much, much. Larger and obviously was built at another time. It's a whole nother story. Um. Drainage is obviously a very big issue and there, I understand they're only talking about a text amendment tonight. But obviously the drainage, what we found uh is that that hillside as it slopes up. Towards uh the Silver Mine Market sheds a tremendous amount of water, has become a real water issue um for the area. So. You know, the concern is more uh land that's defoliated and and. Um, used and and potential. Blacktop, McAdam, anything like that creates a much different situation relative to drainage. So there is a concern there. Um, the one issue is for me a nonstarter and I would appeal any any uh approval that allowed it. The Western Parcel, which is not Peter's two parcels that he owns, but that third parcel is a nonstarter. First of all, it it affects. The neighbors that live but that right there, it's right in their face. Um, and the density level would be way too high. Uh, six houses is too much. Um, and um, the access to it is gonna eat up a lot of that area and I think it's, that is simply a problem and I would not, I as a neighbor. Would not be okay with that and would use all the rights that I have to uh stop that piece of it. Um. Having said all that. Um, because I work with with Pete and and uh Romano and uh Andy and. We do understand how these things work. We do care and I understand where Peter Lane is coming from and I think. I'm gonna say he's coming from a, you know, a a a positive uh viewpoint. Uh, even though at some point if he sells this, he really has no control over what gets built. Um, I personally, and I can represent our properties, would it be okay with a four-house cluster on his two lots? So the two lots that he owns and you would preserve those two structures. And then I guess potentially add two new ones. Um, I would be okay with that. I'd like to see them limited in sc- size relative to the fact that they're um. Um, they're obviously not the underlying zone. Um, and um. The houses should be preserved. They should be deed restricted and um. I think that's something I could live with. I can't speak for the rest of the neighborhoods, but I I I absolutely do not. Would not go along with that Western Parcel being part of this uh, this project.
Thank you. I see there's a Robert, Betsy and Evan Turner, so I'm not sure. Who that is exactly, but could be one of three, it looks like.
Hi, it's all three of us. Good evening. We are, can you hear us?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, this is Evan Turner. On behalf of uh Betsy, Robert and myself, we are the. Largest abutting residential property, uh, two, three and five River Road. If you could show the map, Andy, uh, I can't control the screen. And you'd point to us on the map adjacent to your proposed combination lots, that'd be greatly appreciated. And if you could just put your mouse right on our properties, that's great. So we have the largest abutting um property to this uh neighbor. Um, which they're very nice neighbors. We have uh acquired this property in June of two thousand twenty-two. We purchased it for two reasons. One, to downsize the property that we had in Wilton, Connecticut. We had over three acres. Uh, the second uh was the historical neighborhood. Um, and it came with two structures. One is. A circa eighteen fifty mixed-use shop and barn structure that also has a single-family residence in it. Secondly, it has a two thousand five-built uh mo- mo- more modern uh house. Uh, that blends in with the neighborhood. Um. We are also a. Custom home builder that specializes in renovations and preservation of historical properties. I run. Two businesses with my family. One is a painting company. That's been around since nineteen seventy-five and one is a building company that's also been around since that long. And we love the Silver Mine neighborhood. Uh, and then the combination of New Canaan, Norwalk, um, and Wilton and uh. It's obviously admired by a lot of different people coming from near and far. Um, that being said. Uh, there's a couple of things that we wanna go over. The naming of the project as a Gatesmore project is great and it's a good preservation of the Gatesmore name. Um, however, the Gatesmore also were working and living on our.